Did a lot of preliminary work on this and some instructions from council. Mr. Yerman had recommendations on each item. So when you make whatever, whenever we move to make a motion, please read that recommendation so that it's precise. One of the things that I saw is there's a totality, potential of 110 units, which is quite substantial, which is good to see. So I want to thank everyone who is here, who is trying to do something for housing in the city. Thank you very much. One of the things that I was looking at, that I was a little not necessarily concerned, and maybe when we get your, when we do your presentation, is if you have recognized that your parking for all your units is adequate. There was one unit, I can't remember which one, that said there was some on-street parking. I'm not sure if that's going to be an issue. The other thing that I think would be a good idea is if, you probably have parking for one park, parking unit per unit, but it wouldn't be a bad idea if there's a way that you could build some guest parking, like maybe one additional parking unit or a few parking units for guests because you know that some of these people that we rent will have more than one vehicle and maybe even guests may come and visit for a weekend or a night or whatever. So I just wanted to mention that. ADA units, of course, are something that is going to be necessary in these apartments. I want to make sure that we do have ADA units in there. One thing I'd like to ask, and it's up to each individual, but I'm not sure if it would be a good idea, being that we are putting forward, putting forward this allocation of money, that any of these, these units that we put up, if we could have like a city sign saying something like, "Award of incentive by the City of Trinidad." This way it'll show the community that we're incentivizing the people here to, to do these, to do these projects. One other item here. There's nine, I have nine projects, it looks like total. Our investment is $1,125,000. The return on that constructed amount, if it all pans out, will be $31,262,000. So for the amount of investment, that's quite a, quite a return. So it's, it's good to see. So with that, let's go ahead and get started. We have first, Karen.
We were just, we popped up, this, we've already ordered these signs.
So we have our yard sign and the window, window plaque.
Good.
If I could do a real quick intro, because there's one thing that came up, and then Wally, we actually do have some updated numbers, some of the applicants have changed their numbers while I can go over that. On your desk is, I was, I was real quick, wanted to get into how we got here. If you remember, we had put this program together through interviews with the development community, downtown, conversations with downtown property owners, and that's how this program came about. And just, just so, I talked about the deed restriction and the application and the funding agreement, how the cadence and everything works, just so that we don't have to go through that with each applicant and address one major concern that came up through the deed restriction review, which is this. So the way you, what is in your packet today is a funding agreement and then the deed restriction is attached as Exhibit A. You'll notice that there's a couple of applications that have alternative deed restrictions. And so during, Wally's going to do an initial presentation, and then I'll address those kind of unique deed restrictions, explain them, and then we're going to allow for five minutes of applicant presentation and then followed by council questions. But one thing that came up, so what's fair for one, it's fair for all, in my opinion, on how you address a deed restriction, was the question around the future redevelopment. And since these deed restrictions are in perpetuity, how would somebody, you know, the example that was brought up is, my building was 150 years old. And 150 years ago, it did not have housing in it, and I'm putting housing in it now. And what happens 50 years from now if housing isn't able to issue? I think it was a legitimate question. Obviously, there's a, with the city putting the investment, how do you want to see it stick around? And there was, I, when we discussed, there was the interest that I had just explained. The issue that that property owner brought up there, which was very well founded, was that that interest clause is actually default. And they said to me, "I don't want to be a bad property owner. I never want to be in default," which was the best response I've ever heard. So applaud that property owner for saying that. So what we came up with today in sitting down is to add this Section 13 to all the deed restrictions if approved by the city council. So I'd like to address this right now so that you don't have to do it for each, each application. But basically, what this states is it allows a future re, substantial redevelopment. It's not like painting the, painting the structure, right? It's like a complete redevelopment of a building to be allowed to be considered after 10 years, and that the city council could do one of three things. They could completely just allow for it, they could require the repayment of the economic incentive, or even charge the 4% that's mentioned as in the default. So that would give the council sitting at that time the ability for the, A, the property owner to come and ask the city council, and the city council to have the latitude to make that decision on, based on those three plans. And so if that's something that you would like to consider, we, we met today and discussed it, and we think it's fair, I think it's a reasonable request. There was two other things, Les, you want to make?
Well, if I could, please, I would just like to say, but in no event could that be in any less than 10 years. We want to have a 10-year time period. We think that that should be sufficient to ensure that our, our interests are complied with, with respect to these agreements and the amount of money that people are receiving. So that's the only point I wanted to emphasize, Michael, was that 10-year mandatory minimum time period.
The only thing I was going to ask is, these new changes, have all the applicants been advised by such?
They've all just received copies of it. In my opinion, this is in, is in the best interest of the applicant, so it's not punitive. It's actually in, so they've seen it, they want to address this. But this was, I, we had, we had, again, we've, we've done a lot of work in a short amount of time to get this here today, so we wanted not to delay the whole thing. There were, the only thing I, the only other thing else I will say is, on the deed restriction in particular, there was two other requests that were wordsmithing. They weren't substituted to the actual deed restriction, but I'll call attention to that to the council. One was that it's an intent of the deed restriction that the 80% AMI for this two-year rental period is, that is, that's the intent, that after two years, they don't have to keep the units at 80% AMI. They just wanted a clarifying sentence to that under Section 2, which, again, the way this is written, Les would have to approve that clarification prior to the execution of deed restriction. To me, that request is within the intent of the agreement, that's what it says, but they just want to make sure that, because of the way it reads, they want to, they want to have comments somewhere or something.
So after two years, that 80% AMI could go up?
It's, it's like, and the reason, so, the reason for that is a voluntary rent agreement. The reason that is voluntary is, under state of Colorado, rent control is illegal. And so that's why you can't restrict rent through zoning or this type of thing. There are certain clauses, and I didn't want to, I think the intent of this, if you, if you think about the intent, because the applicant is voluntary and agreeing to do 80% from the get-go, the idea behind that is by them agreeing to that for the first two years, that sets the finish of the unit, right? So we don't have, or our idea is that the applicant knows that the intent is for workforce housing, and so the unit should be built for workforce housing. So by creating that 80% expectation for the first two years, my hope is that we don't get units that have like marble finishes and golden toilets or whatever. I mean, I mean, again, is it, but the goal is to, to try to get those units to stay within workforce. Unfortunately, state law doesn't allow the city to impose rent control. But I think by the applicant voluntarily agreeing and that the term is only two years, we, we are very much in line with not, not going across that line, I guess.
So, so Michael, deed restriction limits what you can do on your property or what you can build on your property. Does that necessarily keep the property values at a higher standard?
You know, the, what I would tell you right now is that it would be hard to state that after what these folks are proposing, that the property values wouldn't go up substantially because a lot, some cases, very substantially, but a lot of these properties are different. Not all of them, but there's a couple, there's a couple of really good examples on there. So I think what you're seeing is, again, with the mayor point I alluded to at the very beginning of this, is you're seeing substantial investment in your community in this progress. So that not only does the city get, when you look at this, not only does the city get the investment from initial, but you're also going to see the long-term return in property taxes, et cetera.
I guess the big consequential question?
Yeah, so what you're saying is on the rent, there's really no way to control that, even though we are building these for low, low rental housing, I mean, economical?
I just sat through the CHAF and DOLA funding update. The legislator, again, this year did not want to tackle the rent control issue. So it's, it's...
So this could be an issue in apartments?
It, it's a, it's a state, it's an issue of statewide concern. So it's beyond the control of the council, unfortunately. So that's, that's basically, and I don't want to be less, but...
No, no. It's true. It's a, it's a problem, and, and it, it's just rent control is an issue. So the, you know, market forces, I, I think are going to have to dictate what, what happens. It was interesting earlier, we were having a conversation on what AMI is, and AMI is already a bit higher than what I thought it was going to be. It's probably a little consolation for your point, Councilman Shu, but, but it is hard to control, and hopefully the rents will adjust accordingly.
Do you have any idea what the rents would be? I mean, on, on an average basis from what's going on?
I have it right in front of me right now, so I can read it off. So 80% AMI for a studio apartment would be $1,152, which is already quite a bit higher than what people could get here in Los Angeles County. For a one-bedroom, it's $1,234. For a two-bedroom, it's $1,480. For a three-bedroom, it's $1,710. And for a four-bedroom, it's $1,908.
I'm sorry, you drifted off.
Long story, what was that?
What was the four-bedroom?
$1,908, so just over, under $2,000. So already 80% AMI is more than what most landlords in our area would even ask for because it's above what our market dictates.
So two things. Number one, that, those numbers come from CHAF.
Yeah, I understand that.
And then two, what's actually really important about that 80% number, though, is that on Wednesday, we're submitting a grant to DOLA to bring in an extra half a million dollars for this program. To be eligible for those DOLA dollars, your rent has, you had to have an 80% AMI clause. So that's, we actually originally even talked about 100% AMI, which is the average worker clause, but because of the DOLA funding, and luckily, we haven't had any pushback from the applicants on, on the 80% going down to 80. So I think it's reflected because of the numbers DOLA just read.
You know, with the cost of some of that, could be an issue with even the people remodeling these places, if you can't rent it. And we spend this money and reinvest that money. I mean, everybody says everybody's moving here and that, but it isn't happening right now. But that, that could be an issue with, how would something like that be solved? I mean, I'm not saying they wouldn't rent it, but if, if the places aren't...
So the ordinance you just passed defines long-term rental as six, six months or more, and they're out of compliance if they don't rent it for, if, if it goes, underrent it for three months. Now, if they're, if they can actively show that they have, they have, if they're actively trying to rent it, I, Frank, I ran up against this in a former town I worked for, where, where they were charged, they were, they didn't want to rent the unit, and they were charging $3,000 a month for the unit, so they don't want to afford it, so it just stayed empty in their backyard. And that's why that three, that three-month clause is in your ordinance. So they have to actively be, and, you know, and then at that point, if they're not, then you have the compliance issue, and that's where you get to stick out.
So those numbers that you gave us, did that, was that after the AMI was put in there?
And then, Wally, why don't you give the most up-to-date, because we've had some changes up on Friday of, of, why don't you, the unit count and the total?
Okay.
Where we're at today. So since we originally received these applications, I think some of our applicants have just learned a little bit more of what's expected out of them from receiving these funds. And so, first of all, at first, we had 11 applicants. We've had two applicants that have just dropped out that decided that they don't need this funding to make their projects happen and didn't want to go with the restrictions that would come with them. And then we have had a few of the applicants that were originally asking for more of the units to be funded, to cut their ask down to, one of them dropped from eight units to seven units, one of them dropped from eight units to five units, and another one dropped from eight units to five units. So all in all, the number of units that will be funded by this program is 50. The number of units that will be created because of this funding is 79, and that's dictated by certain ones. Our cap that they can only get funding for 10 units, but they're building 12 units, 24 units for the whole project of what they're doing. And the incentive request that we have at this point is $1,050,000. And that's just for this first round of funding. We're already getting phone calls of people who are interested in submitting applications for a second round, so, and we're hoping that after today, more people hear about this, more people are aware of the opportunities that are available for them to get that gap funding to complete their projects, and hopefully we can get some more of these builds. But at this point, like I said, the amount that's being requested, not including the TAC fee deferrals that may come at a later date, is $1,050,000. The amount of investments coming into the community because of this program is $23,697,865. So hopefully, all of these go through and we see that putting in $1,000,000 ends up giving us over $23 million in investment.
Those numbers that I came up with was just what was what?
Added up in there, yeah.
Let me ask you to make it clear, how, how are we getting back $23 million in utilities or construction costs?
This is just construction costs. So the economic impact should be even greater than that.
Okay, that's why I was, I just wanted to get that clear.
Yeah, so that, that's just the total of the project cost for each of these. One of them is a $6.7 million project, and we're giving them $125,000 to do that. And, yeah, so they're all in varying size. The smallest project is $150,000, and the largest is that $6.7 million. Okay? We're good? Cool. So, yeah, that, I was going to have the screen on while I just presented those numbers to you. And now we're just going to go through a brief review of each of the projects before the applicants come up.
Go ahead, do you have any other questions?
I have no questions.
No questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm, just, this is for the general, I'm sure of, I'm sure of questions for the individual, but I'm, at the risk of absolutely stomping a dead horse, I want, I want to verify and for the public record primarily, that none of these funds are dispersed until the actual construction is complete.
Yes, all of these funds will be dispersed when the applicant receives a certificate of occupancy. So basically refunded at the end, but these buildings have to be ready for a tenant to move in before refunding.
And I wanted to mention this because I think, I think it's important to mention it. We're talking about the use of taxpayer money for what would appear to be private enterprise in some regard. But I think it's really important that Trinidad do this. It's going to bring affordable housing to Trinidad, which can bring more and varied workforce to Trinidad, which can in turn help Trinidad grow. I'm restating the obvious again for the public record, but I, I want to make sure I understand something. The two-year limit, the way that I understand that is if, if the people that are constructing the properties are, are under the obligation to rent it two years at a maximum rental, the 80% AMI, in doing so, they're going to construct those units so they'll, they'll be able to rent them at that price and still be profitable, right? So going forward, they should probably, I mean...
If they're good developers, then yes.
That's, that's the other thing, that's the other thing that I wanted to mention. That's the thing that I wanted to mention. And I think it's important to note, the, the people with the major skin in this game are still the developers. I mean, they're, if, when you read, when these packages are presented, their funds far exceed the funds that we're putting out. So I would think they will have done research into the local market, what the market can bear, and plan accordingly. So, you know, I, I think it's a great situation. Then, Les, I wanted to ask you, you have read both the economic and the deed restrictions. You've, you've read those thoroughly and are satisfied with their current?
I have and I am, and I undertook significant rewrites of both documents. Mr. Yerman gave us some kind of templates for these, and I, I did significant rewrite. So I am confident in these and what they are doing and what they seek to accomplish. And I am, I, I am, my concerns are greatly assuaged by having the, the deed restrictions and having those kinds of enforcement mechanisms in our money and, and being able to guarantee what we are trying to do, which is, you know, giving the money at closing or at the, you know, the signing or the certificate of occupancy as issued for the developments for these purposes.
And Mr. Shu, have, have you got any other questions?
If I may, go ahead, just one final question. Mr. Rur, this is for, for you, and I apologize for putting you on the spot. I mean, one week into the job, I'm sure, I'm sure this has been your sole focus for the whole... That being said, have you had a chance to, you have a, I'm sure, a basic understanding of the whole process. What, what are your thoughts, initial observations of this as we move forward with it?
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor and Councilman. I've had an opportunity to meet with staff and Les and been thoroughly briefed on everything. I think this is a great thing for Trinidad. I'm excited for this. I really commend the work that's been put in so far by staff, and I think we're at a point where good things are going to come from this. So I'm very comfortable with the process. I've looked at the full packet, the full agreements. I have no concerns. We did meet on the one concern that was brought up to you earlier, and I'm confident that that'll be a good middle ground for going forward.
I'd like to change my answer to what he just said.
I'd like to know that he's currently looking very seriously at our rental markets. He's aware, aware, very aware.
Counselor Shu has another question.
You know, and, Mike, you brought up a point for public interest and everything. Have we decided who's going to be in charge of all these projects to check them out, to see exactly? I know we have, but, I know, but, I mean, it's going to also be our building inspector, right? And state inspectors and stuff? And you'll be the one that signs off on them, or do we have someone else going to do this?
I, I will be the, along with Kent, I will be overseeing this project until, at what time we hire on a new city planner. Then this will be given to them as one of their responsibilities. I don't want to say I'll be signing off on this because you all will be signing off on this, except for the amount that I'm allowed to sign off on. But, but yes, currently, I will be the one overseeing this program.
And that, you know, the building inspector will be the predominant person, overlook, overseeing to look at the construction phase anyhow, and then he'll be the one to authorize to say they're good for a CO.
Yes, and fortunately, we do have the assistance of Michael Yerman for the next 10 months or so. But yes, that was actually one thing we discussed during our meeting.
We have to put up with him for ten?
Wow, not paying me any time, Frank.
So are you going to go through all of the applications first?
Just very briefly. Yeah, just so you all are aware of what's coming up.
I have one question, I'm sorry. Wally, there is several, I, I don't want to feel as though I'm singling any, any of the projects out individually. The, the Air Force was notorious for getting a budget. They would construct new bases and then fail to put in runways, and they would exceed their costs and then ask for more money to put in runways because you need them, that being said. On some of the projects, I, I really noticed they're going to need a lot of treatment outside, maybe up to and including landscape. I mean, is that something that we have any control over, or is that going to just like be defined by the free market in the sense of like, if they don't make it a attractive place, it won't get rented and then they'll suffer consequences?
I would say more than the free market, just city ordinance of what we expect out of buildings. But there's not anything that I know of within these parameters that give them any special requirements, not required of any other citizen.
That would be a good question to ask each individual applicant, if they come forward, ask them if they're going to do anything as far as landscaping to their properties.
And I think that's a great, I think that's a really important process. Question, though, and point, is I want to make this clear, is that what you're approving today is just a funding agreement. In no way, if they have to get, because there's several of these that actually require land use approvals after the funding agreement, you're in no way granting a land use approval today. So when you're looking at this, you're looking at the funding and setting the maximum amount that you're going to give the project. If they have to receive additional land use approvals through the code, they must go through those processes. So there's actually quite a few of these are just starting the zoning or starting the building permit process.
But it would be good just to ask these questions so that we have an idea of what their plans are, you know?
Sure.
I have another question, but I'll bring that up.
Okay. And then again, we're, we're not giving them any funding until they have a CO. So it's not, they can't come back to us asking for additional funding for something that they couldn't afford before because we haven't even given them any funding.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Okay, so, yeah, we're just, you know, very briefly run through each of these applicants in the order that we received their applications. So this first one is the new Trinidad Apartments at 443 North Commercial Street. This is above the former Big Daddy's and Double D's. The cost of this overall project is estimated to be $997,865. This is one of the projects that originally they were requesting for eight, but after meeting with their architects, putting together their plan, they realized there was really only room reasonably for seven units. So they dropped their ask from $200,000 to $175,000. At this time, they are planning on using the city deed restriction that we have drafted. Should we go ahead and move on to the next one? Okay. The next application is for the Depot Lofts. This is at 516 East Elm Street, right next to the old train depot and where Sexy Pizza is currently located. This is one of only two applications that we received that are for new housing. Most of them are for the downtown vacant properties, but this one will be a whole new 12-flex apartment complex. Estimated project cost is $4,885,000, and they are requesting the maximum amount for this program, which is $15,000 per unit. So I'm just going to speak just on the deed restriction on this one. There's two that do not have city deed restriction. This one is being permanently affordable, proposed with a 99-year ground lease through elevation land trust. So that is a much stronger deed restriction than what I drafted up. So any of these that have a stronger affordability protection, we're going to use, we're, I'm going to recommend you use those and not encumber the property with this deed restriction because it just makes for double dipping and makes construction companies hurt. Yeah, and, and these units will, most of the units we're going over are going to be rentals. This one will actually be a for-sale project at, I believe, 70% AMI is what they'll be selling at. Okay, this next one is the Arizona Live Works Lofts at 847 Arizona Avenue, the former Arizona liquor. This is a part of the downtown vacant because it's within... This is a part of the downtown vacant because it's within our zoning map of what is considered downtown and considered a commercial taxing space. The estimated total cost of this project is two hundred and sixty-five thousand, and they're requesting fifty thousand for the two units.
Are they going to do, the old liquor store is going to be apartments or complex or just a, so the whole entire building is going to be?
Not the entire building, but yes, the, there is going to be part of this that is still commercial, but the old liquor store is going to be a part of the space that they're turning into apartments.
I think likewise, probably that 443 North Commercial, the bottom half, is going to be probably commercial too, correct? Get commercial?
Yes. And then, this is the Temper View Apartments. This is the largest of all the projects that is seeking funding. They also have their own deed restriction that is coming with them, getting funding from CHAFPA for this project. It's located at seven oh five East Seventh Street, kind of between Denver and Oak over there. It's the other new housing project. The total project cost of this one is four million eight hundred thousand, and they are requesting a hundred and fifty thousand for ten of their twenty-four units.
And I think that's, as you go over Oak Street and down in that bottom, that little area, I think used to be an old service station, you know, there's a...
Yeah. So this one, again, this is the second alternative deed restriction. This is coming with a fifteen-year CHAFPA deed restriction that keeps ten of the units at eighty percent AMI. So it's a term of fifteen years, and again, that's a state funding agreement. So that one is definitely, that one, that'll have, of the twenty-four, ten of those will stay at affordable levels for a total of fifteen years.
All right, and so this one is one we're really excited about. They've been making some major progress on this project. The East Street School located at two ten East Street, and I wanted to say East Main Street, but I caught myself. Their estimated project cost is six million seven hundred thousand. So this is actually the most expensive project of any of the ones that we're introducing today. They are only requesting a hundred and twenty-five thousand because they wish to only put restriction on five of their fourteen units. These ones are really unique, but we're excited about these ones as well because if, the pictures aren't very big, but if you've ever driven by these houses, they're, they are not looking good. Yeah.
That's a polite way of saying it.
And they actually are currently one of the twenty or so housing units that are on our ADO list of major dilapidated properties within the community. They're located at 503 and 507 State Streets. The estimated project cost for both of these units is a hundred and fifty thousand, and they're requesting fifty thousand to get both of these houses back on the market and livable again.
And that, that's including the asbestos being, I notice, in there?
I am not sure. Yeah. And then, and then this is the Eagles Hall. I'm sure some of you are familiar with this building. Located at 204 Pine Streets, the estimated project cost for this is two million two hundred thousand. Again, this is another one of the units that they would not like to have deed restrictions in all of the units, so there are going to be nine in this building when it's done. They're only requesting funding for five of those for a total of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And that one will need to be changed on my staff report just, I thought, that was a change on Friday. Luckily, I made the PowerPoints over the weekend, so they're up to date. Okay, and then this is a one unit in the upstairs of Frank Images at 234 North Commercial Street. The estimated project cost of this is two hundred thousand, and they're requesting twenty-five thousand dollars to turn the vacant upstairs, as you can see, into a livable one-bedroom And then, the Holy Trinity School. It says number of units is eight, but in reality, this one, when it is all done, is going to be much more than that. They're just requesting a funding for eight of these projects or units at this time. And the estimated, sorry, estimated project cost for this, for the entire project is also going to be significantly more than three point five. They're just kind of hitting it as it goes, and just for these eight units, it's going to be three point five million for this, and they're requesting two hundred thousand dollars.
And then on this one, I did get a call from the applicant. They are looking at how to capital stack their performa and are likely going to receive outside state funding. So I would anticipate that this is going to have a CHAFPA or DOLA deed restriction by the time the project is completed.
I know when they, when we looked at that, this is last year, there was a question because it had two different addresses, and they were trying to merge both of them, and that could be a question, because DOLA said no, and...
I think it was a historic preservation.
Is that what it was, that DOLA was saying no?
So is that still going to be in three phases, Mike?
I didn't, we'll let the applicant speak to that. That's, I will give them credit because they are writing up a big project, so they might not read it. So, all right, and that is the last of the projects we'll be reviewing today. Like I said, this is just the first round. We will be accepting additional applications, and we have not received any additional applications yet, but we have received calls of interest and people expressing that they would like to. So as soon as we get through these ones, we'll put out another call and see what other housing we can give votes here in this community.
Okay, which one do you want to bring up first?
Four, four, three, North Commercial's up first.
So we're going to do these in the order that the applications were listed.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good.
I say hello in my speech too, so I'll start. So hello, Mayor Rico and esteemed council members. Thanks so much for inviting us here today to discuss this project that we're over the moon about. Most of you know me by now, but as a refresher, my name is Kirk Wallack. Among other endeavors, my wife Suzanne, she's there, and I own and operate the Trinidad Lounge, and we serve as board co-chairs on the Fox West Theater Alliance. For our newest project, we have teamed up with some old friends and new ones to purchase a gorgeous two-story building in the Corazon de Trinidad at 443 North Commercial Street, an address you may remember most recently as Big Daddy's Restaurant. With the housing now funds that you are so graciously offering, we intend to fill the second story of this building with seven modern, attractive, utilitarian studio apartments.
You can hit the second slide.
Yeah, please. Of course, you all know the location of the building, but I'm compelled to point out how beautifully situated this place is to live, work, walk, bike, and play with ease in our beloved little town. Just about an equal stone's throw away from numerous parks, the River Walk, the New Hilton, the concert at Trinidad Lounge, and Restaurant Scolor. Actually, it'll be right upstairs for one of the best new ones in the city. This will be an exciting place to live in, within an exciting town to live in, during an exciting time to live in. These studio units would offer a dream situation for those in the hospitality industry working downtown. Thank you. The timing of these potential funds could not be better. Honestly, without them, we would not and will not be active on the living portion of this property, as much as we are in tune with Trinidad's housing crisis. The prospect of this grant has motivated us to get our ducks in a row, to pursue and secure our other funding. With that capital foundation and these city funds to clear the gap, we're ready to break ground on this project within sixty days. Honestly, without the city funds, the housing element will be shelved for at least a few We have partnered with the exceptional architect Mike Dyer, who has previous experience seeing projects through to completion here in Trinidad. You can see by these images that he's taken incredible care to utilize every inch of space and ensure comfort, natural light, and modern convenience in all seven units. Here are mockups from Mike to showcase what we mean by utilitarian modern studio apartments. Just look at them. Wish I lived there now. While we're speaking these, I'll touch on our reasoning for studio apartments. At present, there are little to no options for a single person to live on their own in the city. Think hospitality workforce, as I mentioned, or college students, for example. A couple of our TIDAD state professor pals were just bemoaning the fact that students essentially only have the option of dorms if they're presently flying solo in town. Here's our space as it sits right now. It's cleaned out and ready for transformation. Note that it's already currently plumbed for sprinklers, and the building's interior walls are packed with fire-resistant material. As far as I know, very few structures in Trinidad are in this prime of shape for the very use I'm presenting. Last slide. Finally, I just want to make note of the fact that the partners on this project are mostly full-time residents of Trinidad. Speaking strictly on behalf of Suzanne and myself, though we are relatively new to the community, we love this place for what it is, was, and can become. Honoring its history is near and dear to us, and giving these old buildings new breath but keeping their spirit intact has become the leading mission of our lives. Thanks.
Questions? Before you ask a couple, actually, I can point out on parking, for instance, because I know that's going to be a question. We've already been in talks with the Hams who own the Alton Hall, and so that lot that backs up to the lounge in this building and the Alton Hall, they have lucky monkey butts, it's been a bit now. We're talking to them, and they haven't gotten back. I think probably their hesitancy is that they now have a tenant, so it's tough to ask, you know, eighteen months down the line if we can rent out seven of their spaces. But talking to Dr. Ham on the phone, he sounded pretty agreeable to the idea as long as we can get...
So you do, you have adequate space for parking right now?
There is space back in that lot, but we don't own the lot, so we'll have to work out a deal with Dr. Ham to rent spaces for our tenants through him.
So what, what's going to happen if you run into problems with that?
Then we'll probably lean on city parking. There is city parking right by there underneath the highway, so a half block from there, and then there's on-street parking.
And I think that that's one of the questions that, about on-street parking, I think is a big concern.
Yeah, and it's, I think we, the nice thing about this building is it's, as I said in the speech there, it's so beautifully located right downtown that for hospitality workforce folks to walk and bike and all that is great. And we will have bike storage built off the back of the, back of the apartments. So we would anticipate that a lot of the folks, especially renting these small one-bedroom, one-bath studios, you know, would be maybe younger people in the hospitality area or in the college students' folks who just want to get around town by walking or biking.
And with all these multiple units, are they, anyone, are you supposed to have any ADA units in there?
So that is a building code issue, and when you hit a certain threshold, I do not believe that they hit it. I think it's ten units or more is when you hit an ADA. But I don't want to misquote the IVC because I'm not a building...
Les, if you can get that clarification for us.
I'd be happy to. Just a question there. Your entrances will be in the front and the back. Do you have any fire escapes or anything?
Yeah.
Off the backside?
It will be ways in and out on both sides, yeah.
Okay, and then, that, you do own a part of that area, don't you, where the parking is in the back of that?
We own, but basically enough, like, one parking spot off of the back of the lounge, and then we own a part of the, we own a part of the area off this building.
But you own some of the Trinidad Lounge, don't you? Some of that, is that some of your land too?
We own the lounge, yeah, but the lot is after about ten feet back from the, if you can picture the fence from the lounge there.
You know that that's something that we've been talking about, back where that, they call the old hanging man's tree?
Yeah.
That's a no man's land right now, and I know we've talked about looking to get a, clear title to it somehow. I'm not sure if we've checked into that, but that would be an area for parking, and I think that maybe that's something that we can look into, being that this is moving forward, that maybe we need to follow through, see if we can quiet title it or something? That we'd have, that we'd have that parking close by?
No, and there isn't a, I don't know if it's, I don't think, I'm sure it hasn't been solved, but there is an issue with water drainage in that back, back there, when it fills up. Do you have any plans or what do we need to do, or is that city or what?
That would be wonderful.
Well, who's got, who's got the answer to that? But we need to, we probably need to solve that problem.
The property next door to the lounge, so two away from 443, and then just next door to the lounge there, that pulls up pretty good.
Mitch Matoia has brought that to my attention a few times, about the water puddling up pretty badly, so that could be something that, as you build, I think we need to look at that, see if there's anything that we can do with it. Other questions?
I have a question. Really not pertinent to the funding, but the facade of that building with the aluminum, are you, do you have any plans?
Yeah, we're going to beautify it. We're going to pull that aluminum down, and it will look, it will fit in more with the historic beauty of that street.
I was in the top part of that building when there was an apartment up there, and you cannot believe the amount of space, I'm telling you.
Yeah.
Something that you know already, but, I mean, it was magnificent.
All those buildings on that block, it's shocking when you get in there and see how big they are.
I just, just for, not for clarification, more than information, just to let people know what renters and developers are up against here. I'm in the insurance business, so two years ago, when we were trying to figure out what the replacement cost of a home is, a semi-custom home, the base, the base cost of a semi-custom home was a hundred and twenty dollars a square foot, and in your proposal, just for basic, is a hundred and seventy-five. So that's the problem we're trying to rectify.
And one of the good things that I've seen is that in last year, the cost of lumber, for instance, was in that, you know, two dollars and some cents a board foot, and I think it's dropped down to a lot more reasonable pricing right now, so you're probably doing this at the right time now that the cost has come back. Take advantage of it.
Yeah, we will.
I looked at it, you know, versus the roofing, you're not doing roofing on your place, but seven sixteen TOSB was selling for fifty bucks a sheet. Now it's down to like twenty, so there you go. Questions, other questions?
Yeah, I want to hear more about this bike space you plan on putting in back.
I don't know that we have the specifics planned out yet, but we plan to do like locking, bike lockers, you know, locking shelters for bikes in the back.
And do we have a problem with this parking scenario with under the highway, if possible?
No. Have you checked with the, the person that owns that garage, right? It would be west of your property? Because that's right close to where you're at. I was thinking maybe you could contact them for...
Trying to picture them.
I think it's, I believe it's the...
Oh, the one right behind us?
Yeah. That's like an island, doesn't have its address. No, just because of the shape that that building is in.
I was just thinking of leasing the parking spaces.
Mr. Downs, that area that I was saying that we could quiet title, if all goes well and not, how long does it take to quiet title something like that?
If all goes well and it's unopposed, I would say not long, Mayor, probably ninety days maybe on the outside, I think.
I think we could really look into that.
We will.
I was just interested, I was looking at this, and it seems to be an uncommon area that's where the hallway makes a two-ninety-degree bends. What's the kitchen equipment there?
It's just the hood equipment that would run through there.
Oh, okay, so that's accommodating down below?
Yes, yeah, from the restaurant below.
Purely curious. I have no questions.
Okay. No other questions? Entertaining a motion for the recommendation, Mr. Yurman? I need you to read that out if you would please, under the recommendation portion of
My rural plan is recommending a council member make a motion, followed by a second to authorize the mayor to enter into a workforce funding agreement appropriating one hundred seventy-five thousand plus tap fee deferral at 443, 443 North Commercial LLC, and authorize the city to execute the workforce housing deed restriction to be recorded upon project completion and incentive fund payment by city, followed by a roll call.
Need a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Call, role plays?
Debono?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Thank you, and...
Thank you for addressing it in Trinidad's future.
Yeah, of course. Our pleasure.
Okay, who's next?
Next is the Depot Lofts.
Okay.
516 East Elm Street.
Who is representative?
Okay.
Are you Jeff?
I am. He's going to do it right now.
You can raise that a little, the buttons on the side, other side here.
I'm okay. So I did not prepare a speech, I was just going to go off the application that I sent in for these funds. Quick introduction, Jeff Shanahan, with Shanahan Development, from Denver, part owner of Sexy Pizza, so currently own the land that the depot sits on, and this is the excess parking lot. Next door, bought the depot with the intent of redeveloping land next to it for affordable housing. My background is Denver, in Denver is building affordable-for-sale condo product in Denver that serve the Denver workforce. As I started doing this in 2018, the Affordable Condo Project, I built a ninety-two unit condo project in Denver with all prices under sixty percent AMI, to serve, the goal is to serve educators in Denver, currently under construction on a fifty-unit project in Denver, and then in pre-development.
You said what percent AMI?
Sixty percent.
Six zero?
I think go and do this, and it's seventy, right?
So this one, so my partner, Elevation Community Land Trust, which I mentioned earlier, the way they're set up is the pricing for all the units is at seventy percent AMI, but anybody that makes under eighty percent AMI can live there. And the reason for that is, if you build a unit at eighty percent AMI and try to find somebody that qualifies right at eighty percent, eighty percent AMI, you're trying to find a needle in a haystack, because they need to make, you know, say they need to make fifty grand to qualify, but if they don't make forty-eight grand, they can't afford to live there. And so trying to find somebody in that narrow of a margin is really difficult. So we build, we price them at seventy percent AMI, so that we have a ten percent variation to the end user. Yeah, I'll just, I think, so these are, the plan would be to do townhomes, twelve townhomes with a mix of two and three-bedroom units. Elevation, my, and my goals are for family, family housing, and so we think that two and three bedrooms are the most efficient way to go. We use the Denver Architect EV Studios, which specializes in townhome units. And then the goal is just to let you guys ask questions. I'm sure there's a lot of questions around the deed restriction. Elevation puts on it, they do a ninety-nine-year ground lease with the unit owner with a ninety-nine-year option to extend, so it's effectively a hundred and ninety-eight-year ground lease.
I'm not going to let them know.
Nor am I, nor am I, but hopefully Elevation does. And so, and every time they, the unit owner resells, it's another ninety-nine-year ground lease, so it's effectively affordable in perpetuity.
No, can I ask you a question? Just, I mean, and I think this is for everybody that's developing, everybody's going on, you know, the income and the way things are. It seems to me that it's kind of difficult to plan on that, because if you go to the grocery store, you go anywhere now, things are more expensive, so you can make fifty thousand and still not be able to afford that living because of the utilities and everything going up. So is there some kind of?
Don't say utilities.
I have to, because we just passed it. Anyway, is it, is it, is it kind of difficult to, to say that that particular amount of money is going to be like that next year? I mean, if a person, would you have to make sixty thousand or fifty-five next year to afford these? That's, that's the main concern, is to find something that's affordable. And I know it's the changing times, and there's no way you can adjust the prices, but it's still, you know, you're investing money, we're investing money, and if it doesn't work, you know, it's kind of tough, so, I mean, it's just kind of a curiosity thing that I've asked for, you know, everybody that's going to build these apartments is, what, what do we look like for the future? Is there any plans to, do you lower the rent? Do you make more rent?
Well, this is homeownership, so we, so we base it off, you know, the interest rates.
Yours is a little different.
The interest, the interest rates in the past six months have been a huge hit on these projects. I mean, the first project we did in Denver, the reason we're able to get below sixty percent AMI is there's a thirty-year fixed loan at two-point-four percent. You know, so to answer your question about being able to afford in the long run, that's a fixed mortgage for thirty years. So the things that are going to change, which nobody can, I can't control.
Yeah.
Are property taxes, insurance premiums from, I mean, those are going up too, from hailstorms and all the, and all the damage that's going out. So it's, you know, utilities, property taxes, and insurance are the variables, once they're fixed in for thirty years.
And that's, that's my main concern, is that somebody can afford it this year, next year, things could change. So what happens with the apartments? I mean, do we, is there a way to compensate, to make up the difference, either lower the rent, or what do you do?
I can't speak for rental.
And even your.
And I think the benefit of this is, so, you know, part of the program is Elevation charges a land lease to each tenant, and it's built into the, to their mortgage calculation, and it's fixed for the whole, the whole term. And part of that, part of the reason of that is, if somebody misses their, their rent payment of a hundred bucks.
Right.
Elevation will call them up, be like, hey, what's going on? Do you need help? You know, how can we help you? If somebody lost their job for three months, they can step in and help, somebody can cover that. The foreclosure rate on land trust units is about half of the typical market rate foreclosures. So, I mean, there is a potential for foreclos, but Elevation has a lot of their own money invested in this, and so they're not going to want it to go back to market.
Right.
So before foreclos, they would step in, cure it, and then just resell it at another affordable rate.
One of the things that any of these people that buy one of these units, you know, the interest rates are higher, but at some point, if interest rates come down, they always have that opportunity to.
Yep.
Lower the interest rate, so they need to stay on top of that.
Yep.
Which will help them. Thank you.
I have a question, just for, just, it's okay? Okay, so we're all referring to the AMI. I know what that, the acronym stands for, but what is the defined region? The Trinidad, is it Trinidad?
Los Angeles, it's the county, so it's all done by county, yeah.
So is our AMI lower than most of the states or?
Yes, it is, and that's, that's one of the, that's one of the hurdles down here too, is construction costs are going to be the same, if not maybe a little more.
Right.
Just because of the workforce. And the AMI is substantially different than, lower than Denver. I did a calculation before I came over here. And so a unit in Denver could sell for, you know, two-hundred grand for a one-bedroom unit. Here it can sell for a hundred twenty. So it's an instant eight-thousand dollar gap, a funny gap. So, yeah.
So this, this kind of adds more validity to the program that we're, we're discussing today, because you're at a disadvantage developing in Trinidad rather than where the AMI is.
I mean, it's harder, I'm not going to say disadvantage, but it definitely makes sense.
It is, it is.
It makes it harder, and I think the one thing, though, that all these, like, nobody wants to, all the grants that we'll get and all the people that are putting money in this project, nobody wants to do it alone, and it starts with a city being invested in it. And if the city's not invested, the state's not going to be invested, you know, Elevation's model is, is a matching grant with municipality they're in, so they have agreements with City of Aurora, City of Denver, actually just bought a trailer park in Durango, they're doing a land trust model on. But in all those cases, the city needs to come, come to the table something too, to show that they're invested in affordable housing. So that's, you know, until this came up, you know, we couldn't do it, because it's part of Elevation's bylaws, that they need city support, and it can be, you know, land donation, utility tap fee waivers, but it is.
Thank you. Any questions?
How much will, how much of these units, how much do you plan to sell these units for?
So we're, there's two ways that we underwrite it for sale, and one is backing into it with the AMI, so the national standard is thirty percent, if someone's income can go towards housing. And then the other way is they pull up market comps, and so they take, you know, what's a three-bed, two-bath unit selling for in Trinidad, and they can't sell for, it's up for seventy percent of that. So, which is hard at Trinidad, looking at the housing stock, very easy quality, so they need to do some more, you know, we're doing research on that right now. But right now, the two beds are going for, would be two-hundred thousand, and the three beds would be two-hundred-and-thirty thousand. And that's, you know, that's, when I got into starting condos, I don't know if you guys know, Condo Law Colorado doesn't favor the developer at all, and so people just stopped doing it, because lawyers were just suing every kind of developer in Colorado. And so when I got into.
Sorry!
Now she might know about it. And so when I came in, when I started doing it in Denver, it was, I was going to build quality product, and so even the stuff in Denver, I know you guys mentioned marble countertops and stuff, the stuff in Denver does have, it's all brick, hundred percent concrete, steel construction, aluminum windows, solid service countertops, we want people to feel proud of the home too. And, you know, my pitch to the city of Denver was, you're putting a lot of money into these houses, we're signing a ninety-nine-year ground lease, so we want them to last. You know, they build courthouses, and they used to build those things out of brick and concrete, and then they build affordable housing out of sticks and stucco. So these are, these units will be, we're working with IndiDwell out of Pueblo, which is steel construction, you know, nice quality construction, that's, you know, that's what we're going to do here to make it last.
Any questions?
On, on the day that it's completed, Shanahan Development will own that in whole?
No, the day it's completed, so the, so, you know, there's a ton of ways to skin a cat with Elevation, and that's, you know, that's, I guess an important part of affordable housing development, is having nimble partners, and Elevation is one of those. So on the first project, I built, I financed and did all the, all the construction, and I was on the hook for selling those units. And Elevation owned the land already. The next project, that was very complicated, and Elevation owned the land, so they had a lot of money out, a lot of cash out for a long period of time, which they don't like to do. So the second project, I own the land, develop the whole thing, and then they're buying every single unit at CO, and then they'll sell it to qualified buyers. So that's the plan here, we'll own it through construction, and then at CO, Elevation will buy all twelve units and the land, and then they'll have a long-term ground lease on the land that each unit owner will sign.
Is that, is that a model that you've done before, or you?
I've done it before, I'm doing it right now.
And it's, it's stable?
Yeah, the thing's like it, because Elevation has a good balance sheet, and so I signed a purchase and sale agreement with them before I break ground, and the lender's basically lending against their balance sheet, because they have the funds to come in and buy, buy all the units.
That, that answered, still have a question to add, thank you. So you mentioned every sale will, or I believe someone mentioned, every sale will trigger a new ninety-nine-year lease. Is that a sale of the overarching, or the?
In theory, the land will never sell. And so the way City of Denver has done it in their ground lease, is if Elevation ceases to exist, the ground lease defaults back to the city, so then the city can manage affordability in perpetuity. So it'd be, just, yeah, the land that would never sell to a market-rate developer.
So I'll admit, I'm not, I'm not super familiar with condominiums or the law that governs them, but that being said, hypothetically, and I know this is not likely, but on day one, all twelve units sell, what, what agency is left behind that governs all the overarching costs of running that building, like the groundskeeping, roof?
So for this, so, on the condo project, there's an HOA management company, and all the owners run, are basically the HOA. So every year they come out with an annual budget, that budget includes building insurance, snow removal, maintenance, landscaping, common area electric bills, you know, all that stuff. Here it would be party wall agreement with each, each person would own their unit, and they'd be responsible for maintaining the landscaping in front of their house.
Okay.
And associated sidewalk for snow removal.
I have no further things. Something that was interesting is that someone buy the build or their, protect their project, but they have a mortgage of X, but then they're going to have a land cost of X as well, from what I gather.
Hundred dollars a month.
How much?
Hundred dollars a month.
Hundred dollars a month, that's what I was wondering how much that's going to be.
And again, that's built into the calculation of seventy percent AMI. So within that seventy percent AMI is mortgage payment, land lease payment, property taxes, and insurance. So all those combined can't be more than thirty percent.
So the other thing is that, and you did ask the question about who's responsible for extra and grounds up keeping, you said that was the owner, correct? One thing that struck me is that you're asking for a tenant to provide a five-hundred-thousand-dollar insurance for their property, but.
A five-hundred-thousand-dollar insurance?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, what did, I was.
It was a five-hundred-thousand-dollar insurance?
Where was that at?
I, I saw it in here somewhere, I don't know, but it provided five-hundred dollars worth of insurance.
Five hundred dollars?
Five hundred thousand.
Maybe the condo liability.
There's no condo liability in this, so it's not a condo project.
No, I mean, for when the condo.
Is it maybe in the full master lease that you saw that?
It might have been, like I said, it might have put down page.
Jeff, it might be for like the insurance for the entire project, and then the master lease.
So I was going to say, that's pretty steep for a tenant on top of all the other costs.
That's probably for the condo projects, and it's probably required from the HOA, I don't think we'll get that, that lease.
I think we need to get that clarified.
Yeah.
The other thing too, is that, is that property in the flood zone?
Yep.
Sure it is. So then we're going to have additional flood zone costs, flood zone.
I don't, I think, the architect looked at it, I don't believe it's in the hundred-year flood zone.
It almost has to be, it's on the riverbanks.
Not necessary.
Here's the five-hundred-thousand-dollar lease schedule.
What page is that on?
I'm sorry, I didn't look before.
Jeff, I'm going to have a look at that. So that, so that master, the, so this master lease that Jeff provided was for, is it, is just an example lease? Your project was probably a condo. It was, so that's a liability insurance, they're insuring the whole building. Yeah, that would be the HOA. So this would just be like a typical home, where you just have homeowner's insurance.
It also said on five-point-six that land use fee will increase if restorations or restrictions are removed.
So that's if it, for some reason, goes to market rate, then Elevation has the right to raise that land use fee to a market rate.
That was a question I had on twelve-point-five about the default. Let me see what that was. Look, I think that's been answered already. Let's look at one right in here.
Do you have a construction company in, outfit already, when these have been already lined up for?
Yeah, we talked to Proset, they're out of Montrose, on the western slope. That's where we've built our budget, talking to them and IndiDwell.
That's a point of observation, I mean, the flood requirements can't be all that different from the hard space just down the road.
Next door? Next door?
Or you mean Sexy Pizza? You have something to do with Sexy Pizza, did you say?
Yeah, I'm a.
So you play flood insurance there? Is it on the same story?
I'm pretty sure it's not in the hundred year flood plan.
And you do, I'll leave that in the park because it's not an issue. You have ADA units in there?
You know, there'll be two-story units with stairs in them. So there'll be a bedroom on the ground floor on the three bedroom units. And those, again, with him on that, we'd have to the architect to confirm the IBC. But we, I mean, we'll be within the IBC code.
That's one thing I was going to say is that anytime you have an apartment complex, ADA is addressed. Or at least for the number, I would say probably one unit.
Typically five percent. And I don't know where that threshold kicks in, how many units, but it's, it's five percent of the units. And there's different, there's type A, type B.
You know, you're going to have twelve units in this and you're going to have families probably in here. Any particular thought of like, like playgrounds or anything for families that might?
Not as of yet. We were talking about putting playground equipment next to the depot to lure families to the depot. I know when I go to a brewery in Denver, it's great when my kids can go off and there's play. So not specific to this project, but obviously you're talking about.
Something that we can consider down the road is the property, part of the property across the street is owned by the city that we purchased last year.
Yes.
I think the gas department is utilizing some of it. There's still a pretty big area that we've talked about using that for additional parking. But that could be an area up there that maybe a joint venture between you and the city, maybe do some kind of playgrounds. Because I, I think that's an amenity.
Be great.
That, because the nearest playground is quite a ways away. So I think that would be something that maybe we could look at as a joint venture down the road. If that was it. Any other questions? Okay, let's go ahead and entertain a motion and like you can not read.
It's your turn.
Just reading part that says authorize the mayor to.
To authorize the mayor to enter a workforce housing funding agreement appropriating one hundred and fifty thousand plus tap fee deferrals with five sixteen Elm Development LLC and authorizes the city legal council to review and approve the ninety nine year ground lease to be recorded upon project completion and incentive fund payment by the city.
Second?
You're still reading the whole thing. I only missed a sentence.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Call a roll please.
Devono?
Yes.
Criago?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Thank you very much. Okay, who's next?
Hi everybody. So I'm Larry Wolcott in a Wilbur project. Really quick, let's pause on this one. Day forty seven Arizona Avenue and there on the map, you can see right on the end of commercial in the corridor there. That is kind of the gateway to the bedroom part of our community with the iconic liquor store sign. It's, it's part of our culture here is one way to say. So go to the next slide.
Please identify yourself.
I'm sorry, Larry Wolcott with Swanky Rentals. And I have a slide.
I like the name by the way.
So first of all, I'll tell you a little bit about the project. This is, right now it is an empty space and it is highly blighted. And it's going to take a lot of work. And I'll get to the economics that I'll share with you. It's similar to what you've been hearing. But we're going to turn it into kind of an interesting configuration where we have two live-work lots with the industrial, you know, loft style, not really high finish grade, but nice quality living. And also we're keeping three hundred square feet of commercial space in the front. And there's going to be an interesting three-way lockoff. So that'll be this economic mobility that we hear about allowing people to live, work and potentially run business there as well. So it's just a, a great reuse of what is currently a blighted space. Next slide.
There used to be a gun shop that one time.
There used to be a cigar store, a bakery. So this is, I should have opened with this. I should have opened with this. This is about us. So my name is Larry Wolcott and we have a small family investment portfolio in real estate. And we do short and long-term rentals since two thousand and seven with properties in Los Angeles, we have Grande, Denver, Summit Counties. And it's family business, myself and my wife Marissa and her sister Dara is our property manager. We're very professional and we typically run about seventy percent AMI on our rental properties for long terms. And we love Trinidad. We got the bug about two years ago and we even maintain one of those little apartments where the Tseres used to live above eight forty three. It's a lovely house. Next slide. And so this is the economic factors. You're going to hear inflation and costs and all that stuff all over the place. But you write about the building materials, which is great news. But the property, I'll tell you, it's got great bones, but it is incredibly poor condition. The grounds are in poor condition. Everything is going to be a ground up. And for a small scale project like this and a small mom and pop, this is really the gap that we have to close because we wouldn't realistically be able to maintain those kinds of rates because of the additional costs, because of the condition. And they also, a little known fact about liquor stores in the state of Colorado and licenses is that you all are aware of this. The change in, in licensing, we can no longer have a liquor license, which is fine. I don't want a liquor store. But it forces a change of use, which forces full compliance in everything, including ADA. So we're making pretty significant investments in ADA and full code compliance, including fire suppression systems and the whole nine yards. It's really driving the cost up for, for this project. It's, you know, it's out of scale. And of course, the Arroyo, whom many of you are familiar with, that runs behind the property, not only are we in a flood zone, but we're basically in the toilet bowl of the flood zone. And it is incredibly prohibitive. It's, it's, it's not cool. And insurance is through the roof and everything else. So these are the gaps that your funding is really incredibly helpful on. And I'll be honest, like, without this, there's, we just wouldn't be able to pull up the long term. We have to go to a short-term model to offset some of the initial capital costs and all that. So we've done a lot of homework on modeling this out and it's incredibly timely and appreciated. Next slide. This is one more slide after this, but on the project writing, this is also what you care about. We have the design done. We're working with Wayne Anderson. He's a, so he's our architect. It's in, all the city planning worked with Wally and Sky, Wall Up Front and had a great plan put together. Currently in a pre-permit process, going back and forth on like, you know, irrigation and sprinkler and all of that. Budgets are all complete. We've seen them. Capital funds are ready. Building's pretty much ready to go. And we're anticipating eight to twelve months before it's occupiable. That's, it all goes well when value is willing. And then finally, the last one, there's our repurposed Arizona Live Work Lot sign. We love that sign. It's not going anywhere. We're just going to bring it back to life. And a couple of questions I'll pre-answer. Parking, there is incredible amount, this is a twenty thousand square foot lot surrounded by places to park. So we're going to maximize, we have about fourteen parking spaces. So the, the liquor store building is attached to eight forty three Arizona that is currently three apartments, or sorry, two apartments. No, three, sorry, two upstairs and one downstairs. And there is five residential in total after completion and one small commercial and fifteen parking spaces allocated. So it's, it's pretty generous. And the question about grounds upkeep, clearly we have a lot of work to do, a lot of opportunity. I'll tell you, we're very patiently waiting this opportunity to get matching concrete sidewalk funding. I mean, there's just incredible amounts of linear footage of rotten concrete and just lots of work. We're invested. We own the place. We're going to bring it along. And that's it. Questions?
How's the overall structure of the building and the foundation?
Wonderful. It's, it's in really good shape. And if it weren't, we wouldn't be here talking about it. Now, the guts aren't great. All plumbing, all electrical, you know, all, there is no HUC. There's one gas here hanging from the ceiling. It's not, but the good news, it's a clean slate and it's wide open and it's, but structurally, the foundation is a wonderful visual. The building is never flooded in under twenty years. So we're really happy with that.
Any other questions?
Don't have a question, just a comment. I mean, the use of this building is very unique. And it's really nice because all the projects that we've heard before, not, there's not one the same as the other. And so we're going to be able to fill a lot of needs here. But I love the idea that it's a live-work area. So when you get your tenants, just for curiosity, will they have to be, have the same interest in the business?
You know, there's a lot of flexibility with this space, which we like. So it could be three separate leases or it could be one. It could be three. It's highly configurable because of the lockoff. It just gives a lot of flexibility and, you know, so we're going to just let the market forces dictate the outcome. We're believers in this model. Thank you.
Other questions? The other question I had is that, being that it's, it's kind of a mixed use because of lots. There are no planning zoning issues with this that they'd have to move through?
I don't believe so. I didn't.
So like I said, they're, they're currently in the process, sorry, I'm coming to speak to you. They're in the, just, so one thing we did with every application is that the building department has looked at each of these processes. And so they're, you know, we're recommending approval on anything that has gone. And so they've gone in front of staff and they've gone and walked through. So they're, they're in the process of permitting. They have architects and engineers. And so if they submit building permit and it requires a zoning change or any compliance, that they would have to go through that.
So all of the projects that were considered today, it's kind of cleared from the planning zoning process?
Well, they're not cleared. They have initiated that process. So they're in the, they're in the process. Like I said, none of this, none of your approvals today preclude them from having to go through this.
So those will have to come in front of us again if there is a zoning issue.
Yes.
And specifically, the zoning is neighborhood service and it's highly permissible to, Live Work Lot is a permissible use.
Okay. Any other questions?
With, with that, I make a motion to authorize the mayor to enter a workforce housing agreement appropriating fifty thousand dollars with Swanky Rentals LLC and authorize the city to execute workforce housing restriction to be recorded upon project completion and incentive fund payment by the city.
Second?
Second, you have a motion. You need a motion now?
That was yours?
That was yes.
That was your.
It was supposed to be a motion, sorry.
That was a motion. Got a second already?
Yeah.
Call a roll please.
Devono?
Yes.
Criago?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you very much.
As you said.
I even need that. I'm wondering about that. We've been wondering that for a long time. Go ahead and request a recess.
Do we need a recess here?
Let's go through one more unit and then we'll probably have a little recess.
Okay. I know Louis is on. You want to try unmuting yourself on Zoom?
Yeah, can you guys hear me okay?
And if I'm correctly from wrong, but Louis, you were doing some service for the country this weekend and that's why you're not here?
Uh, yeah, I actually just flew back in from Hawaii to, to continental United States. I'm a reserve time, so I'll reserve and join you.
So it wasn't fun.
We meant to say thank you for your service. Disregard.
Well, yeah, I always get that reaction. I was unfortunate that my unit's in Hawaii. Okay, great. Well, I'm assuming you guys can hear me live there, but.
Identify yourself, please.
Sorry.
Identify yourself.
I didn't catch that.
Identify yourself, please.
I am. Okay, sure. So Louis Lucandi. My company, for the purposes of this project, I really just set up an entity for each project. The company is called Boots Holdings. Like I said, it's just a single-purpose entity. I'm a full-time real estate developer, investor, manager. I live out in California, but I have, you know, my, my entire family on my father's side have settled in San Luis Valley. So I've got an affinity and I spent a bunch of time out there as a, as a kid. But I got, I got an affinity for the area. I currently live in California, in San Diego. And I've had, you know, my, my career has taken me from civil engineering in, in New York, working on big construction projects, like infrastructure projects, you know, to the Marine Corps and then post-Marine Corps. I've been primarily, you know, in the real estate industry in different aspects, on the financing side, development side, inventory side. So I've got a well-rounded experience. And, and what I did about four years ago was basically decided to take that experience and start, start to, you know, take some entrepreneurial action. So I've been developing small-scale, affordable multifamily projects in Southern Colorado, mostly in the valley. Two, two to date, this would be the third. So the first was in Fort Garland called Ryu Creek Apartments. And then the second is just breaking ground actually in Alamosa. That one goes by the name of East Village Apartments. And they're all very similar profile, working with the same lenders, generally the same type of lenders. Slightly different mix of lenders depending on the project. But so, so I got interested in Trinidad about a year and a half ago through just my extended network in Colorado. Took a trip to the town and, you know, my wife and I just tried to get a feel for what's happening. And just immediately fell in love with it, like most of you guys, you know, I alluded to. We're both from New York, so, you know, the main street and commercial and everything really resonated with us. And I, I just liked talking to shop owners, what, what was happening. So I felt like it was a good place to start to do some research. So this project that we're talking about today, I purchased the land, I believe it was April of twenty twenty one, so like a year and a half ago. And I purchased land because the, the previous owner had actually already started, had found the path of, of a multifamily project on a site. And just for various reasons, I think cost and, and just amount of work involved, abandoned it. So I actually resurrected the name Timber View Apartments. They had an old set of plans, but kind of put a new twist on it. And the site was already zoned high-density residential when I purchased it. So I'm essentially maxing out the, the density that's already allowed for the current zoning. And so I'll just dive into the, the details of the project. So it's a twenty-four unit, three-story project. It's an even mix between one and two bedrooms. You know, eight, it's essentially the same floor plan, just, you know, going up three stories. So eight units per, per floor. It's serving eighty to one-twenty percent. So, you know, workforce housing, just, you know, the target of a lot of state housing, state housing financing sources. And then, you know, even particularly this program. And the way the, the mix typically goes with the lenders I'm working with, and you can see down at the bottom right, this is the lender stack in this project. CHAF requires twenty percent of the units to be affordable to residents at eighty percent AMI. And then the balance of the units can go up to one-twenty percent. So in this case, twenty percent of the units was by seven units. So by seeking this grant, I'm essentially increasing that from seven to ten units that are, that would be capped at eighty percent AMI. And this is, this is one of the project, the projects that Michael mentioned that will have another deed restriction that, you know, I won't be seeking to use the, the city provided form. So CHAF's deed restriction is a fifteen-year, has a fifteen-year term. And it has a lot more kind of compliance and reporting teeth in it. So I'm very familiar with it. I'm, I'm, I'm two years into the compliance of that program on my first project. So it's a, it's a beast, but it's, it's great for the community and it keeps everybody honest. So that, obviously you can use that form in place of the, of the city provided form. This site is large enough to have onsite surface parking for, for all public units. So it's sized, I think, a little bit above what the parking ratio requirement is for the mini code. So about thirty-six onsite spaces. It's an all-electric project. Building it with the idea of, you know, incorporating some solar or some, you know, vehicle charging stations in the future. And that, that just means we, we kind of optimize the roof and the orientation of the building to, to do that in the future. But as far as initial construction, it won't include any sort of solar panels or any, you know, onsite battery electric storage or anything, but it will have the potential to do that in the future. This project, the current status, we have a building permit issued. The financing is all committed. Some of that is kind of pending the outcome of this, of today's meeting. So essentially, we, we were going to start construction back in June. And because at that time, all my general contractor pricing was, was based on updates in November of twenty twenty one. So general contractor had to go back out, make sure all the pricing was, was still, still, still good and ready to move forward. That resulted in a twenty percent increase to what we had underwritten and all the lenders were sizing their loans. That resulted in a 20% increase to what we had underwritten and all the lenders were sizing their loans based on. So I had to go back over the last three or four months and and do some value engineering and try to modify the capital stack to make the project feasible again. So this grant program was was at some timing because between this a subordinate loan from the Division of Housing under DOLA and then that logo you see on the on the bottom right, Partners for the Common Good, which is a community development financial institution based in DC. The structure came together where all these things can make the project feasible, so now we're we're essentially ready to break ground. You know, pending the outcome of of today's meeting and just getting to a close the closing line with with the lenders that I'm working with, so you can see a rendering in the bottom left of this page and then, you know, I I just included that picture on the top right to show you the view that we have from South Fork Fisher's Peak. And then here's just a a general site plan. And showing the layout of the site, so that's all I have, any any questions?
Questions?
No questions.
I was curious, what is driving the decision for all-electric?
It's really, maybe it's because I live out in California, but it's really just an eye toward the future in terms of, you know, I know out here, you know, it's almost incentivizing the use of any natural gas, in some cases are even banning it on new construction. So I've gotten really familiar with, you know, alternative heating services, alternative just appliances and I just have a personal preference for for the simplicity of that and the ability in the future to somehow when technology catches up to kind of retrofit if we're already, you know, we're already outfitted for all-electric. So it's really just a personal preference, but an eye toward the future.
Has has that process been vetted with local experience in industry because heating costs are going to be substantial part of people's outlay that live there and to heat homes with electric is appreciably more than natural gas?
Yeah, that's a that's a great point, that's, a lot of work went into solving that particular problem on my first project and I I really recycled that plan, so you know, having a really good building envelope and, you know, good R-rating and and high-efficiency kind of insulation package in combination with, I found this product that I I think works great, it's it's basically baseboard heating, but it's a higher-efficiency gel-filled product. Has a really low, you know, energy consumption. And that in concert with insulation package, it has worked really well for two two winters in the valley, in the San Luis Valley in that first project, so I'm keeping that same heating package on this project as well.
Okay, and then that being said, and obviously I might be putting the cart before the horse here, but at at some point, we'll have to ensure that we have enough electrical demand for that large of a point in that area, is that something that's been like that already?
I want to speak for city staff. We have, we have talked with the electric department, they are having to do some additional upgrades to that. And they're discussing, just so the council knows, as part of the TAPV deferrals, they're they're discussing right now internally whether or not that's going to be considered a main extension, which it isn't, or an upgrade. They're leaning towards that it's just an upgrade and it'll benefit the whole neighborhood because the whole neighborhood service will benefit. So it might be covered on the TAPV deferral, but waiting for final clarification on that. But it seems like the electric company was leaning to include that as part of that deferral.
Any questions?
No question.
Hey Louis, one thing I want to compliment you is that I like your roofline on this. It looks really, it's a nice looking building.
Thank you, yeah, I appreciate that, it's went through like three or four iterations, so I'm glad to hear that.
You mentioned that you're not going to use our deed restriction because you're using the CHAFA. I guess their their restrictions, is that correct?
Yeah, well, that's that's my preference. Their their, your deed restriction is is redundant in a in a lot of senses to the form that CHAFA uses. So I really just want to keep it simple and have one, you know, go with the more restrictive form as, you know, recorded against the property, so.
One other thing in this would be for all of these projects. I hope that you guys, anybody that's doing multiple apartments that are adjacent to each other, that you guys do something for noise. Because, you know, when you're frying an egg, you don't want to hear somebody frying an egg on the other side of the wall. Hopefully that you're doing some kind of noise abatement in your in your building envelope.
Yes, yes, we are, that that was a, that's been a concern of mine from day one, you know, it's kind of it's it was actually a big problem that I wanted to solve because the whole allure and draw, I think, in a lot of cases living in smaller towns is privacy and usually I don't have a preference to go vertical, but because of the, you know, the site restrictions here and the need for housing, I I thought it was warranted. But yeah, all of our common, you know, party wall details are have the required fire rating, but also we kind of upsized for for a sound rating as well. It's been, yeah, it's been factored into the design.
And like I said, I'd ask the other complex that's going up about any type of playground equipment because you're going to have quite a few units and you're going to have families here. The nearest playground is pretty far away, are you do have, do you have any plans in the future for something like that?
Yeah, so actually, if you go to the second page. So I'm carrying like a site beautification allowance, that's, it's a pretty healthy number. And you see that bottom corner corner of the site right there, yeah, so that's the the north portion, that's not developed, that's all slope, so that that won't be usable, but this bottom piece is what I'm hoping, not to do a playground, but some sort of a community, you know, gathering amenity or just a a really nice landscaping package, but something where people can kind of congregate, so but not not necessarily a playground.
What's kind of nice about this is I was looking at each one of these units is going to have a a small deck, which is kind of nice.
Yes, they all have balconies, correct.
That would be an attraction that, and what's, I I think that would be an attraction to be able to release these out, so.
Yeah, that was something I wanted to hang on to, that was on the value engineering chopping block, but I thought that was an important thing to preserve.
Question? Just going to make a motion. Good, you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into the workforce housing funding agreement appropriating $150,000 plus TAPV deferrals with Boots Holding LLC and authorizes the city legal counsel to review and cause the CHAFA regulatory agreement to execute and recorded upon project project completion and incentive fund payment by the city.
Need a second?
Second.
Call a roll please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Chu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Okay, let's go to recess for about five minutes?
Five, 10 minutes? For playground?
I remember that from school.
What's that?
Council back in session. I guess we're on to East Street School, correct?
Yep.
They have to go in there, you have to come down.
Hi, I'm Paul Glenn, PSM Architecture, representing urban neighborhoods and Redline. Our program. With respect to East Street School, as you probably all know, we're under construction right now. Project is going along well. We still anticipate being completed December of this year. It's been a battle, both with workforce and cost. And so the project, I think you all know, started two years ago with PUD request that was graciously approved. And so it is an artist live work community. There's 14 units that have been originally designed. Our petition to you is for five of those 14. We have been battling, I sympathized with the last group that was up here with this 20% increase. We've been battling that for over a year now, and the costs in some areas have gone up well over 20%. So one of the... The problems that we have had is the cost value engineering has been a constant battle the whole time. And so Redline, in keeping with the city's arts and entertainment direction, has requested us to come before you and ask for help financially with the sleeping platforms for this project. This project was originally slated as live work, so the artists can actually live in space. There's kitchens, bathroom in each unit, and in this case, we had designed sleeping platforms. And what it does is help increase that space and create a little bit better usage of... Go to the next slide. I'm sorry, next one. First picture. So then, with that said, the spaces that we have, there's a number of different sizes. They vary, the average is about 800 square feet. A sleeping platform is a loft area that allows that space to be increased and actually creates a safer workspace for whatever their art task is. As part of the value engineering, one of the items that had originally been slated to be cut from the budget were the sleeping platforms. They still have an area where they can sleep. It's an open concept type studio. However, these platforms really do increase the square footage. So we're asking if... Go to the next slide. This is the project as it's getting close right now to being completed. As it's looking, go to the next slide, please. Sleeping platform here creates a space that allows the square footage to be utilized in a better manner, in a safer manner. Unfortunately, this was one of the items to be cut. So I guess we're asking for help with the city. This program couldn't have come at a better time for us. And Redline, the group that will be leasing this facility and managing this facility, has asked us to help, to come before you, to ask you for help with this sleeping arrangement. And they... We will be utilizing a spiral stair and lube of the six ladder to make it more accessible. And the current price of each platform is $23,000. So we're asking the city council to help us with the cost of five of these. Throughout the course of the next few years, they feel that they can reinvest and try to fulfill the balance of the 14.
Questions? What's been your biggest hurdle or challenge so far to date with the project?
There's been a number. Cost increases constantly. You're under contract, you know, they're under contract. G C is under contract to provide materials at a guaranteed maximum price. However, this is unprecedented in 30 years for me as an architect. Just the cost going up, trying to keep that aligned with contractual obligations. So that's one hurdle is the cost. The second hurdle is supply chain. It took almost five months to get the windows in. And then the other one was switched electrical switch here. We're hoping, you know, the last we heard, and here is another contractual issue. Contract's supposed to be substantial completion December 15th. We had a switchgear order for over, you know, the year. And first it was May, then it was August, and now it's September. So the project's moving forward, but that's going to be one of the last pieces. The city has installed three phase up to our building, you know, we're grateful for that. It's all ready to be powered up. We're just missing the piece to connect it to the building, so.
Each platform is the same size?
Well, they vary about a few feet. If you go on to the next. One more forward. Other way. So the units, they do vary slightly for the most part, but for the most part, they're about 250 square feet. They vary based on the unit. The five that we were proposing would be, there was 105 downstairs, 202, 206, 207, I was sorry, 209, 210, and 212, I believe. And the platforms are all approximately the same size, but the units actually vary. Two of the smaller square footage units actually will receive the platform. It almost decreases it by 40, decides that unit by 40%.
So these units, it sounds like would probably be pretty attractive for college students.
They do. Redline, the college students, and Redline has two other facilities up in Denver that they manage and run. And so they have a collaborative where they transfer students back and forth, transfer educators back and forth. So it's really, it's really an interactive program that they have. And it is incredibly attractive to students as well. I know they've been working with the college over here, and I'm not too privy on what the discussions are. I know they've been working to incorporate them.
Well, that's one of the issues with the college now is their dorms right now, they have problems. They're outdated, need a lot of work. There's a few spaces for some students that want to go in there. Other questions?
And I do know that they, I'm not too versed on the capital stack structure of this project. However, I do know that they're trying to keep their AMI down around 71% as well. It does give a buffer zone in there. So they had no problem complying with the change to 80% that was in line with their model anyway.
What's the ceiling height overall in the rooms?
So the rooms, the rooms about 12 feet, 14 feet, varies.
And the sleeping platform is at what height?
It's so it's at seven foot the bottom, seven foot six to the top. So it is a platform. It's not technically a masonine. It is similar to something you find in a tiny house or a sleeping platform, tent bone bed, except it's a lot larger than that. So you have about five feet.
Okay, so it is five feet.
Yeah, it's not a full height masonine, correct?
So you couldn't sleep there?
I can't sleep there. Okay, so what, I guess, and this is way down in the weeds, but how would that space actually be used? I mean, you'd be putting actual bed up there?
Yes, it's a platform bed. You wouldn't have a full height bed with a...
Right, right, yeah. I mean, have to, yeah, you'd have some underground level bed. So, and then the stated purpose of this is for artists to live slash work?
Yes, so the whole, the whole concept behind the original PUD, and it's still a good concept, is that an artist can live here, it's a kitchen, full kitchen, bathroom, breakfast area. They can actually, so it's open space concept, so they can do their pottery, they can do writing, they can do, a glass blowing. It's all set up. There's a whole number of units that were part of the original PUD. Two of the, two of the studios tentatively have been slated to, for dance. There is a dance crew that would like to come out of Denver, possibly to use the units. It was the original, what we've done with the building, these original classrooms, we've tried to keep those as the studios, as the live work unit. A lot of that hinges on the work that we've been doing with the state of Colorado and the historical preservation, District Colorado. So we've kept the studios the size of classrooms. Two studios, 207, 208, were originally the, kind of the all-purpose room for the school. Beautiful full height dividing doors in there. They were originally slated to be two units. We did rough in for those units. However, it looks like right now that may, we're going to leave the full height doors and keep that as a dance studio.
What will happen if you can't occupy the whole of the facility with artists that want to live slash work?
Right now, they have a full demand for it, and like I said, they're working with university as well. But they have this interaction between the schools in Denver and this facility. So I don't think they have any problem filling the units. It's affordability of the units that they're worried about, I mean, the support for it. They want to keep this as affordable as they can, and two of the, for students that, student board, the kindness that we're giving to students.
I'll admit, as the architect, you might not be the first or best person to direct this question to you, but when this is complete, how, will it generate what type of revenues for the city?
So the rental units, they are rental units. They're not going to be sold. And so the school works with their students and their clientele to fill these units, to rent these units. And they have to keep it affordable. The art, you know, the arts obviously, the starving artist, the old saying, they just can't afford, you know, market rate. So it has to be under market rate. So I think that's part of, I mean, it's what I know as an architect as far as their capital stack.
But, I mean, what, what, obviously the building's going to be a huge improvement to the neighborhood. It'll be, probably help property values, I imagine, but I mean, it's a... It seems a lot of money for bunk beds, to state it plainly.
But as far as the project...
I don't think it, this is just part of the project. It's not part, just what I understand. But I mean, I think that's what they're asking. To finish the project as well.
I mean, I know it's not the $23,000 one of that, but I know. I have no other questions, Mayor.
You said that the seating heights of these are 12 feet approximately?
I'm looking at it right now. So it's 12 and a half feet.
12 and a half feet. The walls, where I'm leading with this is that being that tall of a wall, hopefully that you have engineered enough insulation to keep that cost down for heating?
We have.
What kind of heating is going to be in here?
Well, so we have, you know, a four pipe, I'm sorry, two pipe heat pump system on this particular building. So there's a central boiler system, a central outdoor chiller. Two pipe system runs throughout the building. Each unit has their own air handler. And we've, of course, got a...
The walls, are they left as is, or did you insulate the walls additionally?
The walls, the walls are left as is per the state of Colorado. What we did do is, the building was modified back in the eighties. It was a lay-in ceiling, put in about nine feet with bad insulation on top of that. So what we did, in collaboration with the state of Colorado, the historical commission, removed that and in turn put the insulation on the roof, raised the whole height. So we complied with the energy code as far as that.
Well, I know that's the big thing is that the energy codes, the way they're changing the additional energy stuff that the state of Colorado is asking or demanding actually.
We do comply with that.
Yeah, Michael, I mean, just to clarify what Aaron was concerned about, does that qualify? I mean, is everything equal to what we're doing here?
Yeah.
I mean, incentive work, is that okay?
Yeah, so this one...
Because basically it looks like we're just funding one thing, but...
Well, I mean, the way the agreement's written is it doesn't matter about the platform or not. It matters the number of units that are D restriction on the back end. So it qualifies in the sense that at the end of the day, the units, there's five units that will be D restriction. So if you read in the D restriction, they'll actually spell out, so we said like 702. So it'll be 702 to 704, not particularly, whatever particular, have that D restriction on it. So the D restriction will be on five of those. The only thing that's kind of off base on this application is that the fact it's under construction already. But at the same time, we wanted you to consider this because the improvement that they're actually putting in there is an improvement that is being added on to the project's costs, which is platforms. The other thing I will say on those platforms is I do appreciate the fact that they have gone away from the ladders and gone to a code compliant stair up into there, which was, I know, an additional cost that they had to incur, but that was kind of Michael Yurman asked.
Thank you. There's no further questions? Anything in motion?
I move to authorize the mayor to enter into a workforce housing funding agreement appropriating $140,000 with the East Street School Trinidad 2022 LLC and authorizes the city to execute the workforce housing deed restriction to be recorded upon project completion and incentive fund the payment by the city.
One small correction is 125 because they changed the request. So I'm sorry about that.
Okay, you want me to read it again or? I amended to show 125,000 instead of 140,000.
Okay, we have, first with amendment, and need a second?
Second.
Call the booth, please.
Tibano?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, on to, uh, next one is, I guess, five oh seven State Street. Five oh three and five oh seven.
Yeah.
Needs a lot of work.
Good afternoon, Mayor Larson. My name's Lori Ortiz. Along with my husband Dion Ortiz, we own Performance Builders Roofing as well as PBR Drain and Excavation and PBR Rentals and Storage here in Trinidad. Yes, you can see, quite the project. But a little bit of background, Dion and I, over the course of the past ten years, have purchased twenty-one properties here in Trinidad. Of those twenty-one, we still own twenty. The only reason we don't own the twenty-one is because we flipped a house up on the three hundred block of Cotter. And one of the employees that we frequently visit at Trinidad Builders fell in love with it, so we sold it to him. I don't have any slideshows or anything other than what you see the houses behind me. We own the thirteen houses that are located on Seventh and Ash as well as Sixth and Spruce. Some of you may refer to them as the old miner's houses, the old teacher's houses. So if you've driven by there within the last two years, you've seen that we have put our money where our mouths are. Um, we have completely renovated and gutted those properties, interior and exterior. I know we still have a little bit of landscaping to do and we've actually started, but a bear decided to pull through our fences instead of going around. But that being said, um, five oh three and five oh seven State Street. We have actually started a demo on them. We have the houses gutted right now. The yards are cleared. Um, we know we're gonna need new plumbing and electrical, um, waiting on some roofing supplies. We're well aware that, uh, the houses look pretty scary, but if any of you have seen the houses up on Seventh and Ash and Sixth and Spruce, they look equally scary. But, um, one of the beautiful things about being married to Dion is he has seen the depths of your sewers in this town to the tip tops of your roofs. I call him, lovingly call him, uh, the MacGyver of Trinidad. So you give him a roll of duct tape and a box of toothpicks and you've got a rental. So we know that they look pretty scary. I think Mr. Yearman and Mr. Wallace went in there and they were like, ah! But Dion, beautiful mind, and I see the bones of the house. We know what's gonna come of it. We know what it's gonna look like. Um, they are gonna be one bedroom, uh, one bath houses. There is answer to one of your questions. Please put your signs up. I'll gladly, gladly display them on that property once it's done. Um, there is on-street parking as well as gonna be off-street parking where you can pull into the back of the house and park back there, both houses. Landscape wise, yes, definitely gonna get that done. I know that there were some concerns about, um, Mr. Shu said about, um, skyrocketing rents and stuff like that. I have no problem telling you that my one-bedroom, one-house, one-bedroom, one-bath houses rent for seven fifty. My two-bedroom, one-bath houses rent for eight fifty. And my three-bedroom, two-bath houses, I rent from eleven hundred to one thousand ninety-two. Dion and I completely own these houses. There's no mortgage on them. We properly budget and prepare for the expenses of this because this isn't our first rodeo. So the, um, twenty-five thousand dollars apiece for seeking on the houses, which by the way, thank you for coming up with something like this. You have no idea what a benefit it is to give us a little stepping stone. The basis of the money is going to be, uh, whole house and new plumbing and new electrical. So we're gonna start off there. I know one of the concerns Mr. Williamson had was about the asbestos. We have addressed that. It is only in one house and it is in the floor tiles. And it's gonna cost approximately between five and seven thousand dollars to do that. And we have somebody professionally come in. We don't use a, a subcontractor. We have, we'll have somebody come in and actually do it that we've already, um, prepared for. I'm trying to think of one of the other questions you asked. Uh, besides that, was that the, the asbestos?
Uh, that was.
Oh, okay. That's about it. I, we had, uh, like I said, Dion's workaround town speaks for itself. We finished what we start and our whole, um, reason for doing this is we are no developer. We see the beauty in Trinidad. We moved here for a reason. Our children go to school here. Our children graduated from here. We're in this epiphany of the small-town mom-and-pop business, made some wise decisions, made some wise investments, and it's all because of here in Trinidad. So yes, I, like I said, the program for this money is just phenomenal. And this is where we're gonna start. This is our legacy. Um, this is our retirement. This is what we are leaving behind for our children. And, um, that's where we are.
Questions? Do you have any questions?
Just gratitude.
Yeah, thank you for the undertaking. It's gonna be good. You should go by and see those houses. You know, I've worked with Dion for, you know, several years when you guys first came to town and when you bought that project up on Seventh Street, I, I questioned why you did it, but I'd say you guys have done a good job of that. I know that.
Well, Dion used to work for Mr. Wheelie. Way back in the day and he always told Dion, I hope when you get older that you do something. And here we are.
Okay, anyway, thank you for the investment.
I was gonna say, Mayor, I, um, I didn't know that was your property on, up there, the old coal mine houses, but, um, it, that's just been such a fantastic improvement there. So thank you for that. I have, I have no concerns about this at all.
No. It's just gonna be, I mean, even if you painted it, it probably.
It'll be a little more than paint.
Okay, entertain a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into a workforce housing funding agreement appropriating fifty thousand dollars with Dion A. Ortiz and Lori B. Ortiz and authorize the city to execute workforce housing deed restrictions to be recorded upon project completion and incentive fund payment to the city.
Second?
Second.
Call a vote, please.
Tibano?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nora.
Good luck. Oh, thank you.
Okay, we're on to, uh, the old Eagles Hall, uh, high school for Pine Street?
Again, thank you very much for the opportunity to present. Eagles Hall, it's, uh, everybody in Trinidad has probably been there at one time or another. But anyway, um, on behalf of Way Out Investments, they would like to, um, historically relocate this building. It is a mixed-use project. Um, there's three commercial units on an upper level. We propose to, um, rehab the upper level into eight, um, you know, multi-family residential units. Four studios and four one-bedroom apartments. We just started this project, so we, we appreciate, um, this program immensely. And I, I do believe that this program will help this project move forward. So the building is, is approximately six thousand square foot per floor. The basement will be, um, relocated into a, uh, assembly hall, main floor, uh, commercial and then eight units on the upper floor. We are working with the state of Colorado as well on this building historically. And, um, we plan to keep it just the way it is. This building does in fact have enough room for off-street parking. So we will be providing off-street parking for the residential units here. One of the, the commercial tenants potentially right now, there'll be a coffee shop on the corner. Uh, the property also does have a large area, um, on their property off the side for an outdoor dining area. So we would propose, um, out of the eight units, if, if we would ask the, the council for, help, twenty-five thousand dollars for five of the units, right? And, um, as I said, we will be working. I've spoken to the, um, District Colorado. They are going to help us, evaluate this building and, uh, this will be a part of their program. One of the things, this building is not actually in the Corazon District. It's right on the edge. So we are contemplating coming back before you, um, to, um, we, we won't be able to get it in the Corazon District, but your historic preservation district overlays the Corazon. So we will, um, be looking to most likely put this building in your historic preservation district. It is contiguous, but.
Before I go on, what will that require, uh, to put it into the historical district?
Well, I just, I thought I heard you say that we cannot put it in the historic district.
We are. Okay, right now it's currently zoned CC.
Okay.
And, um, similar to what we did with the Pine and Arizona buildings, it is contiguous with that, uh, with your district and with the historic preservation, or with historic preservation district and the Corazon. We did put those buildings in and asked them to be, uh, rezoned, so we will do this as well. We feel it's a, it's truly a job. It's a unique building. And the state agrees. They've already reviewed us and, and said that it is definitely worthy of, of moving forward. So we, I talked to Chris about it.
Good. And Mayor, I'm not sure what was involved in getting the, the Corazon expanded to include another building. I, I probably should know that, but I don't know. So we can.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I will let you know.
Disruption purposes?
I'm happy to do that.
We, we have done that in Chicago where we've, um, asked to be, um, that the district expanded to include something that's contiguous. And it can be done. It's a lengthy process working with the park service, but, uh, we can do that. And so we, that's an option as well.
Sure, happy to look into that.
Our first step is to get it, um, into your historic preservation district. There's only a handful of buildings on that side of the expressway that are actually, if you look at the original maps, they were, um, they should have been there in the, the expressway, just get a bicep to that.
A little further Great Market area building?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where he's.
So, uh, but like I said, with this particular project, we just got on board and we're ecstatic with this program. We really appreciate the opportunity to present this to you.
Okay, questions?
Mike, just one clarifying on the motion. This one is also a change to.
Hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah.
Is that the original? Is that what the building looked like originally or were there revisions to it?
Well, so, so we just, if you wanna go to the next slide, that's the original photo. This is how it looks now. And, um, we are not gonna change.
It's similar.
Can't change anything on the exterior. So we will redo the color palette, obviously, and repair things, but, um, historically, this is one of the few buildings that I've had a chance to work on where all the original components are there as far as trim and details. We have asked the state of Colorado if we can change out the windows similar to East School and they agreed we could. So I think, and that helps with the energy conservation. We will be doing a new roof on this one. Uh, if you wanna go to the next slide. So this was the upper floor. We are going to re, uh, maintain all of the interior trim.
Where's all the gambling tubes?
That's the other slide. That's the other slide. This is, uh, this is.
Self, your original tin ceiling?
We're gonna keep that. We're gonna keep it all. And so the whole center, and you can't really see it here, but, this whole center section, there was a whole bunch of small rooms and then the main entry stair. And then the other big room was the.
Part of the pool.
The pool, right? So we are gonna keep the tin ceilings. We are gonna keep all the light fixtures as well. There's a, a treasure trove of light fixtures.
Huge.
That we can reuse. So, um, they are gonna reuse the bar downstairs in the, um, assembly room. We are going to, um, relocate the pool tables down there. The original, I mean, they're, they're.
Like a crab stable.
But they do wanna reuse everything they possibly can. And it's gonna stay, they agree with us and they're gonna help us.
What about the downstairs?
So the downstairs, we have to completely redo. Uh, it does not need code, it has way of fire.
The floor.
Or no, so we are, we are on the backside. We have to put another exit out of that.
Is there gonna be an elevator? Is there, I mean, do you need an elevator in there?
We technically don't, but we talked about putting one in.
Yeah, cuz I, that was kind of an issue involved.
Yeah, it's, um, technically you don't, but, but we, we thought we'd have to spend the money for that. And, uh, the other thing that we are gonna do too is, um, if we can get it through the, the state of Colorado, is we thought about each unit would have, we tried to make these units upscale, but each unit would have a Chicago-style, um, cable, satellite and just add a new dimension to it. And I give that an upscale look. Marketing people and, and the realtors agreed that that would be, you know, a way to do it.
Wally and Mike, uh, on all of these units, other than like the new builds, the fire suppression? Has that all been?
Yeah, I mean, they'll, they'll go through, go, this one will require suppression.
So we, we've been doing historical renovations for thirty years and I don't think I've done a building where we haven't put sprinkler system in. Two reasons. One, obviously life safety, but two, it allows you to, without sacrificing life safety, do a whole number of things, keep the building in its original form. Buildings are now designed according to our current codes. So, and a lot of things don't comply. When you do a sprinkler system, it does. The only compromise is obviously you have exposed pipes. Um, it does detract from the ceilings, but it, it does have so many more advantages to it.
Okay, any other questions? No. You know, I just, you know, I just, I was gonna say this at the end, but it's, uh, it's wonderful to see all these.
Yeah.
Buildings being refurbished.
Well, and you know what? As an architect, we're, we're grateful that, um, these buildings are so intact, especially in Trinidad. Um, there's really a lot of, uh, inventory of beautifully old buildings on the exterior and interior.
I'd love for the questions to entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'm just gonna wait.
You need to show me.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to enter, uh, into workforce hous, workforce housing funding agreement. I don't have my last name. Appropriating, uh, one of the twenty-five thousand plus tap fee deferrals with, uh, Way Out West Investment LLC and authorize the city to execute the workforce housing deed restriction to the record upon project completion and incentive containment by the city. Follow, oh, go ahead, by the city.
Second, please.
Second.
Call a vote, please.
Tibano?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
On to two thirty-four North Commercials. I've been waiting a long time to get my knees going here. Hello. Just state your name for the record.
I am Dave Frank and there's my wife, Tina Frank back there. And the building, I bought this building, the Barilla Building in two thousand and five. Here's the color photograph of it.
Look at those pictures. They're horrible.
Thank you. But anyway, ever since I met Tina, she's like, we need to live up above. And we've been talking about it for seventeen years and we finally sold our place in Raton and without having another place to move to. And, uh, then we ran across Wally and Mike with this program here and the timing was perfect. But we love to, uh, live downtown. That's our goal. And, uh, that's when Mike Wolken bought it there, Toddland. And the back wall actually filled up down. And there's the one I just showed you. It's a black and white one. Just see the color. And I just got some, uh, CAD drawings that I did in a program there, but it's gonna be a two-bedroom unit. And there's gonna be, here we go. There's gonna be an elevator in the back to the left. And we purchased. And we purchased the property next door, 238 Commercial Street, so we could have more, more yard and more place to park back there. We're gonna put in a new, new entrance door down below there. And the new ramp on the back is gonna go all the way across the back, which is, is not there now. And we're gonna have some ironwork there. That's a view from above. It's kind of a narrow bedroom area, but our building's only 22 feet wide. But it's gonna be two bedrooms and a bath and a screen room. I'm still working on the drawing. There's gonna be a complete railing on there. But that's basically what we're doing. And we're doing cash on that. So it'd be great to have an additional 25,000. Help us about it.
Questions?
No. Thank you for your effort.
What are you gonna do with the little building that you just purchased? Is it gonna...
We're, we're still gonna rent it out.
Are you?
Yeah. The Trinidad gift shop is in there now.
Right.
Yeah.
We're gonna continue to rent that.
Are you gonna provide lunch to people that live and work in that area?
Of course.
I'm down with that.
Yeah.
You know, David, in all sincerity, I watch people, that building, the renovation you did to the side of that building, people are, sit there and take pictures of that property.
They do quite a bit. It was a fun project.
It's beautiful. You did a great, I mean, great job. You really enhanced that area.
Well, thank you. I was kind of an eyesore at first.
Yeah, Barry was, very much was an eyesore, but it's...
Good. That's fine.
There's a question.
So, you said other question?
Yes.
Yeah. I, first off, I wanted to say, I think it's incredible what you've done for the area.
Thank you.
I love going in there and seeing the photographs. I was curious as to how, and I, with all due respect, I don't think you might be the one to answer this. I was thinking Michael or Wally may. How does this fit into the parameters?
Great question.
Okay.
Yep, I know where you're going with that. So the deed restriction allows for it to be a primary residence or a long-term rental. So he'll be occupying it as his primary residence.
Okay.
So long as your, long as the occupants are either long, or long-term rental or, so again, sick is the key.
And work in Los Angeles.
And work. Work, what she does, because his name's on the front of the building.
I'll be there until the day I die.
Okay. Now you gotta be there working until the day you die.
I quit doing the working part.
Any other questions?
Does that answer your question?
It does. I've had several people approach me about this program. And what, what prevents, I mean, and this might be more just for public information maybe, or again, for the public record. But say hypothetically, and this is exceptionally hypothetical, say someone is living in somewhere where they don't wish to live. They inherited a family house that they paid tax on for years and years, and it's dilapidated. Would this program allow them to take 25K and repair that dilapidated house and move into it?
If nobody is currently living there. It has to be a vacant residence.
Okay.
So they can't, no, like, even if they're not living there, no one can be living there.
And I want to be super clear. I'm excited about this project, but I also want to just make sure, articulate that clearly to people that ask, so...
And it also depends on its location. Because this one is located in the downtown core, commercially zoned area, it's applicable.
Sure.
And to real quick clarify, just on all the projects we've discussed, they can be, there's always a future of condominium minimization of those units and sale. If they sell to someone, then they have to be, and they own it as a property, or you have to rent them as long-term rentals or move in as primary residence.
Okay. Okay. No, no questions?
You know, Dave, one of the things I really enjoyed, you know, reading the historical information that you provided with us.
Yes.
Going way back, that was very interesting. And, you know, Burrell, you know, Mr. Burrell, that was one of his, I guess, primary residences, remember?
Yes.
And everybody else, I went in there, you know, doctors and all. So it was, it was good history reading, put it that way. I liked that. And that back wall, I guess that's going to be the area that you're going to incorporate into where the elevator's gonna be.
That's where the elevator shaft is gonna be.
Okay, good. So it's gonna, you're gonna renovate that. I just, I like your renditions. I think it's great. You're living in a perfect spot, simply because you have the Pocket Park Place there too.
Yeah, it's, you know, as I say, it's like a surreal, it's like a stage setting or something out there.
So it's gonna be a beautiful place for someone for you to read it out. Anyway, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Mayor Dan, a motion?
I authorize the mayor to enter into a workforce funding agreement appropriating 25,000 with Dave Frank's and authorize the city to execute the workforce housing deed restricted to be recorded upon project completion and incentive fund payment by the city.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Tibano.
Yes.
Diego.
Yep.
Shu.
Yes.
Thurman.
Yes.
Williamsen.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Seventeen years later.
Except for only seventeen years later.
It's happening.
Just seventeen, sure.
Yes.
Never's better week than never.
Thank you all.
Okay, on to 202, 237 Church Street. It really twisted your arm to get here, I guess.
I'm bleeding out, I twisted my arm. I don't know if these made it into your package. I know we have the...
We have them.
All right. So, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I'm Gary Phantom with Kip Hampton Development Group. And I'm the Operations Manager for JPMorgan. So this is a project we've been working on for north of two years. It's a, it's a big project, school and convent. It's kind of a Rubik's Cube. Every time we try to go one direction, there's a, there's a wall. So one of the, you brought up, Mayor, was the division of the lot. So we went to History Colorado. Even though it was historically always two businesses, there was a convent and a school. History Colorado initially wants to consider it as one address, although it's always been two since 1880. So we will subdivide those properties. We've got a plat estimate, it's about $30,000 to replat it, separate it. And then we've got another small complication that the council had to vote on. Our biggest problem in the facility is it's built out of asbestos and lead paint. So our initial estimate was right at a million dollars, just for a painting. So through Stantec, which works with the city in terms of primarily gas and oil, I reached out to Carrie Iraqi, and she put me in touch with Division of Stantec that looks at asbestos. So she's turned us over to EPA. And I think with the COVID funding, there's an excess amount in EPA, and they're kind of expanding who they're willing to work with.
Does that fall under the Brownfield?
Part of the Brownfield, yep. So Ted Lozano. So to do that, though, we have to be a 501(c)(3). So luckily, we have two 501(c)(3)'s and working on a third. So I think most of you are familiar with Sister Blandina Wellness Garden. We just changed the filing with the IRS to include advocating and helping to develop workforce housing within the city. So IRS, I think they've hired, what, 80,000 more IRS agents? We sent that application 17 months ago. They said it'd be about five months. They have no pinope yet. And they, so they're simply like five or six more months. So what we're looking at doing in the next month, right now it's owned by Kip, and this application is filed by Kip Hampton. We'll transfer that to Mount Carmel Health and Wellness. But they can't hold it for a long period because there is a, there's a contribution law for a 501(c)(3) that any one person can't be a higher donor. We're already on kind of a, kind of amended program. Because of the programs we do, they allow us to go where fill-on dealerships and Jay can contribute up to 90% of all of our contributions. But if we put this project in with an estimated $15 million to develop, it will, it will cancel our 501(c)(3), and we would become a foundation and have to give away up $2 million a year, which obviously can't sustain. So we filed it under Sister Blandina. Sister Blandina isn't approved yet, but it will be in about four or five months. And that will have the charter to help with workforce housing. And there's a five-year lookback. If Jay can put the money in and develop this, and it doesn't become a burden on the 501(c)(3), it's sort of like money that never really came in. So this would become an entity of Sister Blandina Park. So that legal structure is the last seven or eight months to try to figure out how to get to that. Because there, there's a couple of things that are in the works. Obviously, thanks for, for the, for working on this program. I know I talked to Michael for probably a year and a half, and to Wally, they were working, trying to come up with this. But we've also worked with History Colorado. We've worked with DOLA. There's a meeting in November where DOLA is looking at a workforce housing grant program up to 35,000, maybe 40,000 more early. And then obviously EPA. So grants can go through that kind of capital stack, but so far, everyone has said they like the project. They like Trinidad, they like the project. They see us activating a building that's been vacant for over a decade, and it's right town. So I think we have all the pieces, but I think it's 9B, the workforce housing agreement, says that the council would have to agree to allow us to do those transfers of ownership. And I think you know Mount Carmel, you know Sister Blandina. It's, it's us, just how we set that up. So there are 34 to 36 apartments that we're looking to develop. This would be eight of those, 34 to 36. We've, we've got some rough designs, I think, that you can see there of all three, three floors. And it's a mix of, of one-bedroom, E2 bedrooms, and, and some no-bedroom efficiencies in it. And the difference between 34 and 36 is if we determine not to do a two-bedroom, we can make two efficiencies. And we really are gonna look to, to Wally and to the city to what that need is. If there's need for more two-bedrooms, we can adapt. If there's need for more efficiencies, we can adapt. Because it's a, it's a long, this is a long-term project. Relative to the 80% AMI, looking at where that is currently versus market, the AMI allowance is probably $200 above market. So we don't see that we're probably be able to ask for the 80% AMI because we want to be at market rate. So, you know, we're seeing efficiencies are more in that 900 range. And I think it allows for almost 11. So we'll probably be under that, that 80% when we do that. So I thought I'd let Grant talk about the capital stack a little bit more and how we're, in our timeline.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, Gary started off with complexity, so we'll just hit you with a little more here. This is a...
Go ahead, state your name for the record.
Sure. I'm Grant Bannon, proximity green, helping the Kip Hampton Group. This is a timeline that just speaks to the overall project.
Grant was our project, helping in Project Development. Perfect. Whether it was the project that we did with Ed Diego on the car dealerships, or whether it was the Florida, he's been introduced or...
Unfortunately, when it gets complicated, they give me a call and it's a slam dunk. Nobody hands me the microphone. So, so that's my beast, beast of burden to carry there. So this is just a, sort of a five-year look to say the projects involved. As Gary described, you know, this is the adaptive reuse of really three buildings into two future uses, which would include a hostel and a restaurant bar use in the convent space, and then apartments, workforce-targeted apartments in the school spaces. But that's a complete adaptive reuse of the building. And so step number one is to make it a clean building. And it's, it's primary building materials are asbestos-containing and lead-based paint. It's gotta get cleaned up. So thank you, city and staff, for all the work to, on the study phase. We're gonna be applying for the cleanup grant. You can see that timeline. The applications are targeted to, that released in September, applications due to end of October, November, which could then enable remediation funding through the federal government. And that's the whole purpose of the 501(c)(3) ownership. Besides the fact that it wants to be workforce housing long-term, is to just enable the flow of those funds without necessarily needing to pull the city into that. Because those would be the two types of eligible entities, so... And then assuming we can get through that phase, we, you know, the organization, Kip Hampton is the organization, is the parent company of the sort of the starting entity for the 501(c)(3)'s. They said, let's make this workforce housing. And so that is the next layer of the, if you will, is we can get to a clean slate on the building, and then turn it back into something that's productive. And so we think it's awesome that the city has this funding program. We'd like to partner that with a Division of Housing funding, or DOLA funding, or maybe both, to think about opportunities for workforce housing outcomes that might be broader than eight units, but that'd be down the road. And so we don't have a crystal ball that answers every question. And we, early on, sort of came to the conclusion that the building couldn't be solved in one fell swoop, but instead had to be done layer by layer again. So environmental remediation is up first, and we've been working alongside the city for a long time on that. And we'd like to start going down the path on workforce housing for this building, really thinking about, you know, how that could be instrumental to its final reuse plan.
So parking was a question. There's a total of, I believe, 134 parking slots, which would be the workforce housing, the hostel hotel, and possibly some retail from the brewery. You'll see some demolitions starting on the brewery, probably within the next 30 days. That's seven little, seven buildings made into one. And I think four, Carl? I think four, three or four of those were determined to be unsavable. And we did a lot to try to save them, but they can't be saved. So the main bell tower and the old school district building and everything that kind of surrounds it will, will stay intact. Yep, so this, this project is, is large. Relative to, you know, areas for children, we're directly across from Chino Park. There's access right through the back entrance into Sister Blandina. We see, hopefully, working with the diocese to improve the football field and make it into something that the kids could actually play on without losing a kneecap or a... So in fact, we're talking to the bishop here in the next week or so. Even if, even if all he would do is allow us to put in turf and water it to it overnight, so it'll become a very beautiful campus all the way around.
I don't have a question, but I think from all the projects that Kip Hampton does, has done throughout the city, I think, you know, we understand that this project will be done well. I just hope and pray that Mr. Chino doesn't do 15 change or something.
Only, only 13? Only 15?
You do not just laugh at that.
Don't, don't do that, Jared, if that will happen. I think one of the things we have to do to keep this, you know, because again, we're gonna be rent-controlled. And I told you, you know, you need to do this, you know, once or twice, not... He's determined to put in balconies, and History Colorado's already said, no. So he said, well, I'll change their mind. So he said, well, I'll change their mind, I said, then. So, and we're looking at, like, Juliet windows, you know, that would float in and have, you know, beautiful outdoor, you know, long, fresh air in and everything. So we're, we're trying to thread History Colorado with Jay Chuminho. Because his, he, as you've seen, you know, his
He's a perfectionist.
He is, and he, he has a very high standard. We actually started this, could be a life tech project, and the math actually worked pretty well. But it was a non-starter, he just said that we need workforce housing, we need to, you know, be able to bring people and give them places to live. So one of the other things, and again, I know I'm off-base, that we've talked about with Michael, is once we do the hostel, potentially to help everyone else in town? Because we're building the hotel, our cost of labor is about 20% above, if I was building this in Denver, because you wind up paying, you know, all the hotel fees and per diems and all that. So one of the things that we talked about is potentially taking the hostel and developing maybe a floor that could be extended stay, so you could have carpenters come from San Luis Valley and be at $40 a night instead of $200 a night. And be able to, yeah, then we, then we can help everyone here that is looking to, to build. Because everybody here is a challenge, it's going to be like so we think we may have a, a way there, and we're going to talk to Michael and a little bit more on, on the hostel, and how we can maybe work together on, on that as well.
Any questions? Any other questions?
No question. Did you say that the brewery was being demolished in total?
No, not in total, so there's seven buildings, so like, feel like from the back, there's the big sandstone wall, it's a Snyder Brewery on it, and all the walls inside have collapsed, and the foundations collapsed. And we had, we had structural engineers, and Jay wanted to keep it, and it was like not possible. So the main brewery with the bell tower is savable. The, the school, the school district, the red building is savable. There's, but looks like two other buildings, they're really kind of surrounded by ones that need to be demolished. So it's a, it's a very complicated demo, because all the walls are adjacent, if it falls that way instead of that way, you know, you're hearing a lot of trouble. So we've got a couple of high-end demolition teams that are looking to start taking that down. And Carl is looking to save all the sandstone, and that, that would be, going into projects like this, that would really beautify it.
I knew you could recycle that sandstone.
You can recycle it.
Anything else, Michael?
Just one real clarifying question, or something we discussed, because the de-restriction is attached to the, to the agreement. In all likelihood, because of your capital stack, they will be touching outside external funding like DOLA or Division of Housing, which would have much more teeth on their de-restrictions, so we probably would be replacing that de-restriction with, with a outside.
We like to use Michael's, but we told you, DOLA probably won't be flexible.
So there, Les, there's no problem changing that de-restriction afterward?
I don't believe there will be, there, I think we can reject that.
Les, if you could, just so I can get past the Gotten with Tim Lamb?
Sure.
He, he's really concerned that there's something that says we'll be able to do this transfer, because we're, we're going to move it into, into Mount Carmel probably in the next two or three weeks, because we only have like six weeks to hit the EPA deadlines. And then that'll go from there to
Mount Carmel would be the fiscal sponsor, the 501(c)(3) fiscal sponsor that would then sell it, or sorry.
To sell it?
Sister Blandina.
Okay, I can, I can talk to two.
Perfect.
Mr. Dan motion?
I make a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into the workforce housing funding agreement appropriating $200,000 plus TAPD deferrals with Kip Hampton LLP, and authorize the city to execute the workforce housing deed restriction to be recorded upon project completion and incentive fund payment by the city.
Second?
Second.
Call the board, please.
Tavano?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is, you know, we may have got there, but this is it, but just put our, you know, kind of nose to the grindstone and we'll, we'll make it work. Thank you.
You know, all these projects going forward, it's amazing, like you said, it's beautifying the community, a lot of restoration of these buildings. You know, and I, I was just thinking, as we were going through this process, is that we're trying to establish Trinidad as a destination point. You know, with everything else that's going on, and the earth concerns about everything they were renting, you know, and as we, as we establish ourselves as that, as that destination point through the creative industries, you know, the recreational opportunities that we're going to have here, beautifying our community with all these buildings and all these new things that are going on. It's going to make us look, it's going to make us more attractive to attract, you know, other businesses to come into the community. So I, I believe that this is a, a wise investment.
Absolutely.
And the return on the investment is going to be really, I think, tremendous. One of the things, a couple of other things is that we have one lady that left Trinidad because she wanted one of these types of buildings where she could move into, but she, but she had to leave because there was nothing available. So this will retain people that are going to retire and want to find an apartment or something that they can live in, where they don't have to take care of the outside of their home. The big problem is, is when a lot of people are working, we need workforce housing for these guys to put up tents, I guess, I don't know. So anyway, I just want to say thank you for, to everyone who has worked on this project, Michael, you've done a tremendous job in a short period of time, you and Wally, thank you for all the work. And it's, it's moving along really, really well, thank you very much.
Chairman?
Quick question?
Yes.
Could you please do a retroactive, retroactive program? I did this 20 years ago in a original program. I still have the pictures, the receipts, everything, the plans. I still could use some help.
I know it's late, but I just, you know, it takes a lot for an old lady to get excited. But after this meeting today, I am excited about these projects. And like I said, in my prior comment, just the variety, I mean, housing projects we're working, you all are working on, it's going to hit on all cylinders, I mean, pretty much going to do everything, and I want to thank, I know some of the developers are gone, but publicly thank them for believing that Trinidad is worth investing.
Exactly.
And, you know, great.
Steve, remember, buddy, we've got to go to a city merger.
It's all Steve Kim, and it's all, it's all Steve.
Yeah, that's right.
That, what's your adjournment? Circle? Call the board, adjourn.
Tavano?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?